At six thirty one, um, so please know that this, this meeting is being, uh, several things tonight. It's being broadcast live with the cameras up there, um, it's being digitally recorded through that, and then we're also on Zoom. Um, so, you know.
Recording in progress.
And recordings in progress. So anyway, just please know that as, uh, as we, as we move through it, um, so we're gonna start, uh, our first item open session. Uh, we've got a lot of people here probably for, um, a lot of the, the same thing, but does anybody have anything for open session to start us off?
I'll stop.
Oh, we got one up there actually. You wanna, you wanna come on up?
Whatever.
Okay.
You want me to stand over here?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Hi, Sandra Berry, one Nestle Woods Lane, and, um, chairman of the parks, and I didn't realize this was a big meeting, and I'm just here to update you on the playground.
Yay.
Yay, which has finally come after a long wait. Just let everyone know it's my seventy percent done because some of the equipment hasn't arrived to complete it.
I'll work with them.
So, um, I just wanted to bring an update. Wonderful project, should be done by the end of next week, and we're hoping to plan like a ribbon cutting, kind of a celebration going on. Parks will pick that date as long as B O S doesn't have a problem with us just picking a date to do that, once this is gonna be done.
This is your project, it's looking great.
And it came in under budget.
Alright.
Alright.
I would never say that until you're done though.
Yeah, that's true. And I will tell you, D P W has been very, very helpful with us. They had to, you know, resolve a couple of things last minute, which was very wonderful, um, that they worked really well with us, and, uh, so we're happy with that.
Alright.
Great.
Just bring it up to date.
Alright, thanks Heather.
Okay? Alright.
Alright.
Thank you.
See ya.
Bye bye.
Bye.
My name is a general question about High Street.
Okay, yeah, we'll come out during that, during that process, so, okay, so just a little, uh, cause we do have more than, than normal here before we get into the, uh, the actual agenda. So, so the way things will work, cause, cause we have a lot here, is, um, uh, we, uh, as we get into, to each, uh, item, if you do have something to say, please raise your hand. Uh, I will, uh, find you, I will write something down like brown shirt, you know, so I have the, the idea if there's a number of people in a row, yes?
I, maybe this is for open session, but I'm Allison Smith, twenty four High Street, and I'm the temporary chairman of the agricultural commission.
Okay.
And I need to, we had a really wonderful candidate, and we don't have many members, we need every member we could possibly get, so I, I'm hoping to, um, bring this member on. He recently moved from Templeton, we had gotten a meeting, uh, an email from him, so we wanna get the selectmen to appoint him.
Okay.
Is that?
Absolutely, is, is, do we have any info yet?
Uh, I have an email and e- yes.
That's all you're gonna do is send that, send that to us?
Okay.
And then, um, we'll put it, all we can do is put it on our next agenda?
Perfect.
Okay.
I, I just wanna keep the agricultural commission going, so.
Oh, yeah, no, it's great. I know, so, so please send that to us.
Thank you.
And to, do you have an email address that you can send it to? Do you know our email address?
Yeah, I can do that.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Alright, thanks a lot, sorry. Is, is anyone else here, sorry, for open session? Are we, hi.
Hi, I'm Heather Dakota.
And where you? Okay, hi.
I don't know who David Nixon is. Ah, this nice gentleman told me what I needed to do and how I needed to do it. Um, I'm here representing my husband David, who is literally very hearing impaired. But we have an issue that we're hoping this board can help us with, because we've gone before several other boards. And do I need to stand up? Do you want?
You can, if you're comfortable there, stay right there.
Okay, um. We have an issue with a fence that was erected on a piece of, piece of property that we own and pay taxes on, and we want the fence removed. And we have not had any luck whatsoever with any board, and so it was suggested that we come before this board tonight and see what you can do for us. Um, it's a long history, and I don't wanna get into too much of it, but it is regarding, and probably everybody's heard of this, the Dakota Family Irrevocable Trust. And my husband is the sole trustee. And this trust was, um, set up over twenty years ago by, um, attorney candidate Brekka. And it was while my mother-in-law was still alive, and it was just to designate the properties involved. There's no money. There's no money in the trust, it's just three pieces of property. My sister-in-law lives on the piece of property of fifty five old Boston Turnpike. And we know the tax collector has had issues getting her to pay back taxes on the, the real estate taxes for that property. And under the trust, that's an obligation of hers. We pay the tr- the taxes for the other two pieces of property.
Yep.
Um, which is an adjacent lot to fifty five old Boston Turnpike that's non-buildable. And a beachfront property across the street from fifty five. So we pay those two and pay our own, of course. But my sister-in-law put this fence up, and we think it has something to do with her request for a dog kennel license. Now, David as trustee has never given permission for a dog kennel on that piece of property. And according to our understanding, he has to issue permission before she goes ahead with dog kennels. Um, so this fence was supposedly to fence in the kennels. But it's not on her property over which she has jurisdiction, which is a hundred by hundred foot law. It is literal, literally on the adjacent property that we paid the taxes on. So we want the fence removed. We're hoping the board can suggest some ways of us doing this.
So who have you, which boards have you, have you contacted so far?
Well, what boards have we contacted? Everyone? My husband's been here.
All the boards.
My husband's been here.
Oh, but the last one was the, uh, planning board.
Yeah.
And they, and they told us about this, coming before you. They gave us the date, the time, et cetera, et cetera. Um, couple of your office workers, Mallory in particular, and Tommy this morning was very helpful, but Mallory I've talked to a couple of times. And she was hoping to get a group from all of the boards to come and view what we're talking about and see if they could help us. That has never materialized. We understand everyone's busy, and maybe a lot of people are not around all the time, and that's, that's okay. All we want to do is see if you can suggest ways of us being able to remove the fence from the adjacent property that, on the property we paid the taxes on. Um, it was suggested that we simply remove it. But every time that's been attempted, my sister-in-law calls the police. The police come down, they tell David to go home. And literally, it's dropped for the time being.
Is it all surveyed? Do you, do you have, I'm not saying you don't know your own property, so I'm not trying to say that. But is it all surveyed?
Actually, the town of Hupperton, um, has the deed to the fifty five old Boston Turnpike now, and it's registered with the Worcester Registry of Deeds. Because with my sister-in-law not paying the real estate taxes, there was a lien placed upon the property. And several months after that, there was a notice of taking with a footnote that there was a deed registered now in Worcester. So. I feel like our hands are tied. I don't wanna have to call the police because he's down there and being harassed by his sister. He doesn't wanna get into, pardon my English, a pissing contest with his sister. But in reality, we don't think it's right that she can put up fences on property over which she has no jurisdiction.
And you were saying that she, uh, is, doesn't pay the taxes, correct? And has no intention of paying the taxes?
She has. She is supposed to pay the taxes on that one piece of property, fifty five old Boston Turnpike.
But she has no intention of doing so?
I haven't talked to her.
The reason I'm asking is if she, if that's the case, I don't, I think she's lost her right to have any objection to her, that fence, whatever happens to it.
Well, the, the thing is, again, let me repeat, that we on occasion have tried to take the fence down. She calls the police, and the police come down and tell David to go home. So that kind of like puts us in this big catch-all, you know?
Yeah, I think you're stuck between either a civil matter or a zoning enforcement officer.
Yeah, so that was mine. So if you're ever gonna put, um, uh, something that's either not on your land or within easement or whatever else, you need some sort of a variance, right? And this is even further than a variance. You're not just like infringing upon the edge of a property, cause you can't, like, I couldn't build my house five feet from your house.
Mm-hmm.
Right, or five feet from our property. Mine's gotta be thirty feet, there are certain setbacks.
Yep.
This is literally on the other property, though it sounds like.
It's on the adjacent law, and she only has jurisdiction over the one hundred by one hundred foot law on which the house sits.
Yeah.
So, she's doing it, and I'm, I don't know if the town has actually issued her a new kennel license. I know from talking to someone in the town offices several weeks ago, that they were not going to give her a kennel license. Um, we've even had to call the ca- um, animal control officer because her dogs get out. And then they're all wandering the streets. We saved one of them from being killed in the street, so. And, and this one, this fence is literally just a wall. It's not really like an enclosure, it's a s- it's a straight line wall. I don't know what the benefit of that is, or, or how it would help anything for her. But the fact remains, it's on a piece of property that we paid the taxes.
Alright, well, um, well, yeah, so, so, I mean, we don't know all the answers to all these questions, right?
Well, no, I understand.
This is the first time it's coming to, to, probably most or all of us, so, but no, hey, you've come to the right place, you know, okay?
Yeah. Okay.
So what we can do is, is, um.
Talk to the tax collector.
Well, we're gonna talk to, you know, everybody we think so, I mean, Katie just mentioned a couple of different, you know, reasons and.
Yeah, it's either, it's, it sounds like, and I, I have followed this, cause I'm nosy and I follow along with like planning board and all these other boards.
It's okay.
Yeah, and I also sit in the offices a lot, so I hear a lot. Um, and my two cents is it's zoning enforcement and it's a civil matter. Between those two, you need to get a lawyer. Personally, I know, I'm sorry, either that or just get a bulldozer and bulldoze it down, but then you'll suffer the consequences, you know, it's like, I don't know what else to say.
Then she'll have the police down.
That's what I mean, you'd suffer the consequences, so my suggestion is legally, get a lawyer. And you, the zoning off, the zoning enforcement officer should be involved in this and should be seeing this. Um, and go out there and look at it and help you deal with it, because that's what it sounds like, it's between those two. It's like you guys are stuck between a rock and a hard place. I understand it doesn't sound fun, and it definitely, yeah.
No, it is, it's not fun.
No, no, it's not.
It's not fun because we have a legal matter pending with my sister-in-law as it is.
Yep. But that's what I mean, it's a legal matter you have pending with your sister-in-law. That's where.
Yeah, but, but the other legal matter has nothing to do with this.
Well, no, but I mean with this, like, the fence is on your prop, it's not like the town came in and built a fence on your property.
Right.
Or the neighbor next door that you have nothing, this is on a trust, it's a combined piece, it's in the trust, it's.
It's in the trust, yes.
Yeah. And if she keeps calling the cops when you go to go do something about the land on the property, and, you know, it's, it's between zoning and your own civil matter.
But I don't even know how zoning applies to, like, mutual property and how it's subdivided within a trust.
That's the only.
I mean, you, you guys, have you ever been presented with something like this? Like, I'm just looking.
Yeah.
I think Alice has a thought here.
Yeah, we, we looked into this, we sent you a letter, the dog officer, the.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
Yeah, cause we don't have enforcement powers over this.
Yeah.
And concluded she didn't have, I mean, you know, it's, the time has lapsed.
Yeah, yeah, I, I remember.
But she has no, she, she, her arguments were, I have a special permit, which he doesn't, which is revoked, was never recorded and it's been revoked.
Yep.
She has a kennel license, which she didn't.
This was back to two thousand and nine.
The dogs weren't even licensed.
Yep.
Yep.
I mean, I, I spelled it all out, but what can we do aside from report the matter to you folks? We don't have any enforcement powers.
No, the only person that has enforcement powers is, is, is zoning.
Right. So.
That's it.
And we got a letter back saying it'll be, from her.
Yeah.
Saying, you know, you'll hear from my lawyer and, huh, nothing.
She can't afford to pay taxes, she can't afford to pay an attorney.
Dan would bring a point up, but it may not have anything to do with zoning.
It might not, but he's, that's the only enforcement besides the police.
Maybe we, maybe we should refer it to our council.
Yeah. Besides the police.
Dan, can I ask a question?
In an opinion.
Sure.
David.
Yes?
Do you know anything on this, on the, uh, tax piece? It, we don't currently own this, correct?
We don't currently own it, but it is on, uh, in tax title.
Okay. Okay, so.
So it's in the pipeline to us eventually owning that parcel.
Okay.
Unless taxes are paid.
Okay, and do you know anything else on the zoning piece? Did you have, I'm sure you haven't had a chance to necessarily look into if there's anything specific.
Yeah, there's multiple jurisdictions here. The, the kennel license, I believe, is under the Board of Health. Um, the fence itself would be, uh, something that would be, um, under the purview of the building inspector, um.
We've tried that.
Yeah, um, the.
We get no results, and that's why I think they suggested we come to you.
The unlicensed dogs, uh, is, uh, is another matter.
This is particularly, it's a, it, yeah, it's a, it's crazy.
It sounds like, it sounds like this is a, it's a pretty sticky ball of, of, of bad things happening.
Yeah, it's up there because of this.
Uh, and what I can do is I can see, what I could suggest that we do is we try to get a meeting focused on this, uh, particular property. And see what kinds of resources we can bring as a town to resolving some of these issues, um.
That would be greatly appreciated.
Yeah, that's, sounds like we've tried to do it.
Sounds like the next, it's the only next step I think we have.
Yeah.
So, you know, if we go that route, and then y- y- I think that'll, um, flush out who can even, you know, um, legislate on, on it from the town standpoint. Um, and then, you know, we can probably get an opinion from town council on a matter like this.
You can get an opinion, and then we, we could always go back to Ken Brekka.
Yeah.
Is there a reason why she's allowed to stay on the property if she's not paying the taxes? It would be like, not paying your bills, can you evict?
Okay. My mother-in-law set up the trust, and it was supposed, supposed to stay with her for as long as she was alive. When she passed, and this is written in the trust, my sister-in-law had the right to live there under certain conditions. She was responsible for the taxes.
Mm-hmm.
She was responsible for upkeep, she was responsible for insurance, she was responsible for maintenance.
And what happens if she doesn't do any of those? Is there something in the trust?
Well, I don't know. I think we'd have to call Ken Brekka and see if we can literally remove her from that.
Yeah, cause like if you can evict her.
Because David is the sole trustee, she will never be a trustee if anything were to happen to David, cause he's going to be, what, seventy six, seventy eight, seventy seven this year, something like that.
Sure.
Um, Ken Brekka and I become co-trustees.
Mm-hmm.
And believe it or not, I would boot her butt, then heck off that property.
Yeah, but seriously, like.
Faster than I can bury him.
Because if that is the legal option, you know what I mean, like, I hate to say that, you know, I don't wanna, uh, see anybody thrown out of their house, but if they're not following their obligations, it's just like paying your mortgage. You don't get to stay. If you don't pay your rent, you don't get to stay.
Yeah, I, I actually have copies of.
Yeah, you can. I'm, I'm a landlord, you can evict.
You can.
I actually have copies of the notice of taking and the notice of lien.
Yeah.
On the property from the tax collector.
Yeah.
Because, as a sole trustee, all of that, the tax bills always came through us. And I literally would make a photocopy and he would walk it down to them, the original, you know, that came to us. I mean, that's all you have to go by is who's the trustee of the property, David L. Dakota.
Right.
So, okay, fine, so it came to us at forty five old Boston Turnpike.
So, but what you're talking about is not a town matter at all?
No, that's, that we do.
Right, so what we can provide is what we have as an option for a town, and I think the next step is what David talked about. Why you're here tonight is what we can do, you know, besides sort of brainstorming, which I think we're doing, cause people have, you know, things that they can contribute to the conversation. But overall, sort of a next step of, of maybe getting s- the, the probable parties that can help on this together, and see if we can help.
I would appreciate it, as would David.
I'll try to set something up this week, if not, then early next week.
Perfect. Do we have my number?
I don't.
We gave it to you this morning, but I'll give it to you again. Nine seven eight, nine two eight, forty two, forty four.
Forty two, forty four?
Yeah, that is my landline. Now, if you can't reach me there.
You know what, you could probably give the cell after the meeting. Why don't we do that in writing, just so we're not.
Well, we're, we're just, we're just gonna leave you be, because that's the only reason that we're at this.
Oh, I just don't want you to say it on camera, just in case.
Oh, I see.
Whole bunch of people will be calling you.
You know, I mean, if he's gonna die someday soon, I may need a replacement.
Alright, we've been over that, so that's clearly gonna happen at some point.
Oh, sorry.
I've gone to the board so many times that I'm telling you, I don't think they even wanna talk to me anymore, but the boards are trying to help me.
Okay.
All of them, trusted, because.
He can't hear though.
There's a mess going on down there, and it's gotta get resolved, because I've been battling this for two years. The police are not helping me, okay? It's not just that, but because of what was going on way back when they got kennel licenses. They put their kennels on a leach field. You cannot put a kennel on a leach field. It plugged the tank. They turn around, they put a hole in the tank, and they put a sixty-five foot pipe out into Chris Barnard's back property. I asked the board to help to go down and do a Title V, close it down. This is gonna happen if, if this leaks into the wet field in back of us.
The wetland, yeah.
The wetlands, and it's not that far. They asked me to post it. I went down and I cut the lines to where all of the stakes are. Came all the way back up. The last big stone that I went down to, the marker was underwater. And it took me a day to figure out where it was. It was underwater and green moss. I found it, I put a peg in it. I pegged across the whole house, okay? Ten feet. The police, she called the police. Ten minutes later, the stakes are thrown over the fence.
That's what we're up against.
Okay, well, I, I think we.
They don't wanna go down, the police don't wanna go down there.
Okay, they're gonna call a meeting and they're gonna try to get the right people involved, David, David.
That's the way, I'd like to see it that way.
Okay.
Okay. Alright, um, anything else, or is that okay with you?
No, we're, we're good.
Alright.
We're good, so we'll leave you be.
Hard, hard feet troubles.
Okay.
And we'll hear from you when you have a chance.
Alright, sounds good.
Thank you for listening.
Alright, thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, anyone else for open session?
Thank you. You're welcome.
David, good meeting here.
Thank you, you as well.
Uh, okay, we got one more.
It's, it's an open session, but it's, um, High Street people have been texting me, they would really like video, and they're only getting audio. Is there any way we can get video? Cause they can do a presentation.
Of, uh, the, uh, the, the fence discussion?
No, 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 this is coming.
No.
A meeting in general.
The meeting in general.
So they can't see that High Street recording?
They cannot see anything, only getting audio.
No.
I think we're gonna share a screen, and that way we can see the presentation.
I think that is the shared screen.
Oh, we can now? She just said, I think we're good now.
Okay. Okay.
Let me see him.
Okay.
There we go.
Alright, I think we're good. Alright, so n- next item on the agenda, um, we're almost to you guys here. Um, but the next item is.
Next consent agenda.
Yep, so we'll go through that. I just had it up, let me just get it for myself anyway, so I don't have to keep referring back. Okay, um, so the minutes and consent agenda, um, so all we have are minutes on the consent agenda that I can see here, and, um. Where are we at with this?
Heather.
I have edits, but I don't know if you wanna go through them tonight, or just hand them over to David, and we can perhaps do them at the next meeting.
That would be great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks Heather. Okay, so we're moving on, so now, we have, we have, uh, we reached item, uh, room number four, which is the High Street Public Information Meeting. Um, I'll let them introduce themselves in a moment, but, um, let me just really, uh, say real quick, so, um, everybody, I assume, uh, as it's been going on for six or so years, knows that the town center reconstruction, um, uh, is, is nearing upon us at some point next year with completed design plans and, and three or four different times where the town has voted to authorize monies for the design of that, which is gonna be paid for, the construction's gonna be paid for by Mass D O T, through Mass State and federal funds. Um, we've had T E C, um, do all of the engineering for that. That project in two thousand fifteen began like this, which was, uh, uh, the, uh, the Select Board authorized, uh, some amount of money to, which is twenty, twenty-five thousand dollars or so, to put together, um, a, uh, sort of a high-level schematic design of what, uh, reconstructed, uh, town center might look like. And it just sort of went from there. Um, and many, many years later, um, through what the funding options were, through different iterations of what the design was, through many public meetings and all that, we're finally there. So this is the very first, uh, meeting we've had on this, which we did a similar thing. The Select Board voted to put together some money to, to authorize T E C to, to do a schematic design for us for High Street, very preliminarily. And now, this is our first, uh, uh, time as a Select Board, as a public, to be able to see, uh, what they've come up with. So if you wouldn't mind introducing yourselves, and then, uh, then you've got the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and members of the board, and members of the public. My name is Kevin Dandrade, I'm a principal, uh, owner of T E C Incorporated, The Engineering Corp. We're an engineering firm, uh, located with an address at three eleven Main Street, Worcester. Members of our team, as the chairman stated, has been working diligently over the last half a dozen years on the Route sixty-eight corridor. Uh, and that is something that Mass D O T plans to advertise in roughly nine months. So the design, as he stated, is nearly done, um, and I figured I'd start with that, because that's something that the town can, uh, really celebrate, you know, as far as, you know, a, a commitment to looking at the future of the village area and the town center, uh, and then working diligently with the state partners to try to advance that project. So, at the point that we are at now, it's dotting i's and crossing t's, uh, the town is going through the right-of-way process for easements, uh, but the design is essentially done on that one. But one thing that we heard, uh, consistently throughout that process was that there's a desire to continue types of multimodal improvements throughout other areas of town. Uh, to look at proactive planning and design of different elements. So tonight, we're here to talk about the High Street corridor from Route sixty-eight on the south, uh, connecting back to Route sixty-eight on the north. Uh, but th- tonight is the first, uh, pass at, uh, dialogue with the board, the dialogue with the public to understand, uh, what the needs are, what the observations are. Uh, and then we have a couple ideas for what might be options for that roadway.
Kevin, can I just add one thing there?
Certainly.
So what we found, um, through our, you know, discussions with Mass D O Ts, through consultation with T E C over the years, has been, you know, the Mass D O T doesn't really just, uh, sort of haphazardly fund things. Right, they've gotta mean something. They've either gotta mean connectivity of the community, they've gotta mean a corridor from a fire station to another, or, or something like that. So there, there are, um, you know, we don't have that many in town that would maybe qualify for some additional Mass D O T funds, this might be one of them.
Correct, and, um, to orient to everyone, um, High Street is about four thousand feet long, or roughly three-quarters of a mile from end to end. Um, it has access to Route sixty-eight at both ends, uh, and at the southern end, see if my pointer's working, I think, don't think it works on the screen. Um, there are approximately thirty properties, uh, residential and agricultural, that are accessed from High Street from end to end. Uh, this is something that we've looked at for the entire road, cause there are certain consistent needs along the entire length. As far as the history of the project developments, uh, we were hired by the Select Board to advance the con- concepts, uh, and to do the initial data gathering for what is out there. We did a field walk with, uh, David and others in early June after doing some of our several field visits to look at the existing characteristics of High Street. We evaluated different cross-sections of the road, so what can fit within the roadway in contrast to what's there today? You know, based on the different types of users, the, the cars, the trucks, the pedestrians, the bicyclists. Um, and as we looked at the existing needs, uh, there were some, several things that really jumped out as far as the pronounced needs in the area, or the observations of the existing conditions. First is the poor pavement conditions, uh, with a lot of what we call alligator cracking, and we have a couple photos from end to end. Uh, just cause of the age of the road, um, you know, loads on it over time, it just has a way of degrading the, the surface quality. Uh, there is partially a closed drainage system, uh, which means a series of catch basins and manholes and pipes, uh, particularly on the southern end. There are a couple cross culverts, or pipes that just go across the road more towards the northern end. But how drainage is handled, the storms, like, we might get this evening, um, maybe? Um, how that storm water is conveyed off the road, down the road, and then away from the roadway right away. There is a discontinuous sidewalk, it starts with, you know, good visibility on the southern end, closest to us here at Town Hall. Um, and as you start to head up the slow rise of High Street, it starts to lose itself, some of which is buried in soil, but then it ends at a certain point. There are utility poles that are primarily on the east side of the road, um, it doesn't jump from side to side, which ac- actually presents good opportunities for how to do a consistent treatment along the roadway. We have a series of photos, just to kind of photo log some of the observations that we have, and I think you are, are all probably very familiar with them already, but we'll run through them regardless. On the left side of the screen here, you can see the alligator cracking. This is just one stretch of the roadway, but you'll see something similar, um, continuously from north to south. The photo on the right depicts the existing sidewalk where it exists towards the southern end of the corridor, uh, but there's no vertical. Uh, but there's no vertical separation. You know, on many roadways, you would quite often see a curb or what we call a berm that would provide a different elevation and better distinction of where the sidewalk space is for pedestrians and where the roadway space is for vehicles. On the left side of this screen, uh, you can see just a representation of one of the catch basins that's along the roadway, that collects a portion of that storm water. On the right, there are a number of beautiful street trees along High Street. Um, a lot of them, just because of the proximity of the utility poles on the east side, there are a number of substantial mature trees on the west side of the road, some of which you can see here. Uh, obviously, significant diameters of trunks. On the left side of this image, you can see, uh, a part of that sidewalk that exists, like if you push the, the, the leaves and the soil away, you would see certain remnants of sidewalk for several hundred feet, um, up as you head up the, up the slope from south to north. And then on the right, you can see there are little pockets of wetlands, roadside ditches, things that, as we go through a process of identifying opportunities, um, we may have a process to permit certain improvements as we try to treat storm water in a different way, or even do potentially just some road re- reconstruction in the area of resource areas. On the left here, on the south end, you can see that there is a very well-defined grass panel that is in front of the stone walls, most of which, based on the G I S information that we have, is an approximation of where the delineation of the right-of-way is, between publicly-owned space and privately-owned. You can see that there is a swath of land there where potentially a sidewalk could fit with very little interference. On the northern end of the corridor, um, you can see here, I'll stand if everybody can notice, the proximity of the poles to the edge of road is different on the sou- southern end, where they're much closer versus the northern end, where they're set back from the edge of road by an extra few feet. When we look at the opportunities for, and I apologize, this is getting cut off just cause of the view. Can everybody see that? Is that popping up on your screen?
No.
No, I just see David next to him. There we go.
All right, there we go.
Okay.
It was cutting off the upper right of the image. But as we look at the opportunities of the different cross-sections, this is a relatively low-volume roadway in comparison to Route sixty-eight. Uh, we don't have a specific tube count that we put across the road for this project yet. Uh, but based on our field observations, it would be well less one thousand trips per day, whereas Route sixty-eight is between fifty-five hundred and six thousand per day.
So why don't just ori- orient everybody? Would you, just, so you've got, yeah, you got the bank?
Yep. Um, so Route sixty-eight is here, we are down at Town Hall down here, uh, and this is the southern end of High Street.
Thank you.
So when we look at the opportunities to try to improve the multimodal environment to make a space for some of those vulnerable users like walkers, pedestrians, this is an opportunity where we could potentially reconstruct the sidewalk in place. Reconstruct the roadbed with minor widening, cause the roadway width varies between nineteen and twenty-two feet, depending on where you are along the roadway. And in talking with the town's highway department, it would be beneficial to try to create a uniform, consistent width throughout its enti- its entire length. Uh, some of the benefits of that could be to provide a, uh, customary travel width, travel lane width, which is typically ten feet on some of these quieter roads with what we call a one-foot shoulder. So the total width could be twenty-two feet, which is more or less mirroring the existing width in many places today. In other places, it might just be a foot or two widening on one of both sides. But if everybody can see this here, to try to introduce an asphalt curb or berm, something that has a very well-defined edge that can contain that storm water, bring it down to either the existing or new catch basins, and the sidewalk and a grass panel could be reconstructed along that southern end to retain the utility poles in that space. So it's a good way of.
Relocated utility poles.
Um, potentially keeping them right where they are. That, that's, um, anytime we can limit utility pole relocation is a huge cost savings, time savings, and, uh, frankly hassle of dealing with where the new cabling could be. So our goal was to try to create a cross-section that could retain those utility poles. There may be a few that might have to be relocated, but based on what we can see along the corridor, there's an opportunity where we can create a berm or a curb and create also a safety benefit for motor vehicle traffic, where there's a curb that separates motor vehicle traffic from the utility pole. Yep. Uh, in the middle section of the corridor, it changes, uh, right in the area of, uh, twenty-six to twenty-eight, where the opportunity could be a little bit different, where, based again on where those utility poles are, we can reposition the road and have the sidewalk right against the roadway and in front of the utility poles. Uh, it looks like that is feasible throughout a number of the different stretches, um, as we head towards the north. Uh, we've shown the roadway width at twenty-two feet, the sidewalk width at five feet, which is something that's required based on the state standards for sidewalk width, and it allows for, um, not only pedestrians to cross, but if there are any, um, physically impaired, um, users along the road to allow two wheelchairs to pass at the same time, or a wheelchair and stroller, say. So the five-foot width is very standard as far as here in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. And we've just shown green representing that we'd slope off the back or back a sidewalk or between the sidewalk and the roadway. In this image here, this is again where we have the sidewalk immediately adjacent to the roadway in order to try to limit the relocation of poles. There can be limited obstructions where the pole might be in part of the sidewalk, but as long as that is an in- intermediate obstruction where there's at least three feet to pass, then you don't have to necessarily relocate the pole. When we look at the opportunity again, this is something where the roadbed needs to be reconstructed. Uh, I understand that today it's kind of like natural traffic homeing, you know, where you have enough bumps and potholes and things like that, that nobody's permitted to go very fast. However, the pavement is in great disrepair, um, and we recommend that it go to a consistent twenty-two foot width with a five-foot sidewalk with or without the grass panel, depending on the proximity of the utility poles. The roadway itself, when you look at the opportunities to restore that surface, uh, it's an opportunity where you could consider reclaiming, which is essentially chewing up the pavement and the gravels underneath it. They can be pushed to the side, compacted, pulled back, compacted, and then have brand-new pavement over the top. It's likely that you would want at least four inches of pavement for the long-term health after compacting the other layers. It might be some sections of roadway where we are very early in the process, but with exploring with probes and/or what we call pavement cores, understanding the exact depth of gravels that may be under the road today. So that's something that would still be in front of us if the town elects to continue along this journey. But we, we can see that most of this work can be done within the right-of-way. Uh, this is not something where we're currently recommending widening out the road for bicycle lanes and the like, like we are with the shared use path on sixty-eight, because the characteristics are very different, right? It's, it's much, much more slowly-moving traffic, a much lighter volume of traffic, and in this case, we'd recommend that it be roadway reconstruction with a single sidewalk on one side. By having it on the east side, we can also limit the, uh, removal of trees on that west side, where there are a lot of those existing beautiful street trees, shade trees, um, on that edge. To fully reconstruct the road, we put together a order of magnitude conceptual cost estimate that brings us at around one point five million. That includes a contingency because, you know, we're dealing with aerial graphics and not survey and design plans. But we've got enough experience, uh, for pricing of projects of this size that might be an opportunity to look at not just the mass dot process, but other funding sources. Uh, there may be an opportunity that in the next cycle of infrastructure grants, and you might have heard not only news at the federal level for stimulus and infrastructure spending, but the Commonwealth has been very proactive as far as looking at opportunities to help small towns like Hubbardston, um, with an in- infrastructure grant program that you could be a candidate to get up to a million dollars if it's a successful application. Uh, it's called the Mass Works Program or the STRAP Program, Small Town Rural Assistance Program, and it's something that's put out through the Executive Office of Housing and Economic Development.
So real quick, so we, like, Old Westminster Road, you guys have seen that, that was done, so Old Westminster Road, a few years ago, that was part of the same grant system, so a STRAP grant. And then, uh, back in two thousand twelve, two thousand thirteen, when Ragged Hill and Grimes or a few that were done, that was packaged with some Chapter ninety money, which, which is the money that we get from the state to do the roads through a grant as well. So we've used this a few times in the past, and it's been, uh, been very valuable.
Yeah, and this is something where I would encourage the town, when that cycle comes up, and you've got time to go through the dialogue with the community too, over the next six to nine months. Uh, but one thing that the state likes to see is public outreach, public involvement, um, and a unified voice, just like you had for the village and with Route sixty-eight. This is something we'd like to do. Uh, please help us out. So that's a high-level summary of the High Street project as we see it. Um, we've made several visits and, and I've, I apologize, I forgot to introduce Matt Meslowski. He's one of our project engineers, uh, working with me in Worcester. Um, and he's done a lot of the drawings, um, for this project. So we're thankful for the opportunity to work with the town. Thank you for selecting us to advance this concept. Uh, and we would certainly like to hear from you and the public to see if there's any things that might shape the final version of this, uh, before moving to the next stage. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much, Kevin, uh, and Matt. Um, and before we take questions here, let me just throw a couple things out there. So he had some, just so we're understanding funding, so everybody knows, um, the final, can you go back one slide, please?
Yes.
So the last two bullets, we've got the conceptual construction cost estimate, which was, Kevin just went into, that one point five million dollars, including a contingency. That's, uh, what we're trying, we will eventually try to get others to pay for. Um, so whether it's through the STRAP Program that Kevin talked about, um, through the Mass Works Program, or a TIP project, which is a transportation improvement project, which is how the, the, the Main Street, uh, town center reconstruction is happening, that, that, our intention is not to pay for the work ourselves. Um, but the last bullet, which is survey, design, and permitting, a hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that is something the town would pay for. So for, for, over the last, uh, ten years or so, for, for the, the Route sixty-eight south from Elm Street to, um, to Rutland and Route sixty-eight north, from, uh, basically the, the Rec Field to Gardner, that was something we allocated money, uh, approximately a hundred thousand dollars ten years ago to. And then over the last six years, we've, um, through several sou- town meeting votes, um, and basically unanimous, um, the unanimous, uh, consent, um, we've spent about three hundred and fifty thousand dollars on the design for the town center through, uh, T E C. So, anyway, it's, it's the same process that we're, we've talked about before. I just wanted to get the money sort of thing out there, um, as we move forward here. But I guess, um, anything else to add at this point, or are we ready for, uh, for some questions?
No, I thi- I think you just brought up a good point, though, as far as the investment that the town's made. Um, it's been a significant one in terms of local dollars, but it has reaped something that was more than tenfold, almost twenty-fold in what is coming from the state and feds to the town of Hubbardston. So, um, the, the rewards are some investment and then, uh, building it along the way for consensus and design development so that others, like you said, can flip bill rather than the town.
Great.
And that's our, that's our goal for the town as well.
Okay, well, we are gonna try to get through some questions on Zoom if there are any, but I, we wanna start with, with those who sort of came in the room here. If you've got, uh, you know, please raise your hand if you have any questions for either the Select Board or, or for, uh, for a T E C, um, and, you know, any, anything goes, you know, it's sort of our first look at it. So why don't we start here in front, then you'll be second?
This, uh, STRAP grant that I read about quite a while back, it was a million dollars for High Street. Is that etched in stone that High Street is gonna be paved?
No.
It's not?
Um, so the STRAP grant, um, I'm, I'm not a hundred percent sure. The last couple STRAP grant applications, we actually put for Lombard Road. So it might be a different, I'm not exactly sure.
I was not the opinion that there was, that it was already approved.
No.
It was a million dollars, no?
No, no. So the la-
This could all be, this could all disappear?
There is nothing here yet. All we have is a design right now, and we're looking for, or we're just trying to take the temperature of the community.
Right.
You know, and, and, and how, you know, for the town, just to go back to it again, the town center project, everybody wanted that to go. You know, really, uh, just, just because, who knows why. And so, you know, because of that unanimous consent, we went to every option possible to be able to see if we could find money. And because it was five million bucks, which is a lot, which is way more than a single, you know, STRAP grant, or a what's called a complete streets program, some other, um, sources that are available to small towns like us, we had to go to the big one, which is the T I P, the TIP Project, which is a transportation improvement project. So here, we just haven't gone anywhere yet because we wanna find out if people actually want this.
I thought, I read this online, and I think it was on the, from the highway department, that they had a million-dollar STRAP grant, and it was, uh, awarded.
No.
It was on there.
Okay, well, I'll have to, we'll have to fact-check that.
Yeah, it was, yeah.
Um, and, and, and take a look at, at what, uh, what, what that was, because, um, we, we haven't received any STRAP grants in the last couple of years, unfortunately, but, um, you know, that wasn't, that wasn't something yet, but I will check into that.
Well, could it have been something like Ragged Hill that he saw?
That was years ago.
I know, I'm just saying, it's still on the, there's still information out there.
I'm just gonna check. Simple as that, I'm gonna, yeah, no, no, I'm gonna check, I'm gonna check, so, we'll do.
If I remember, I think it was per- the idea to pursue it, I, I believe that's what I read. This is going back several months ago.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so it could have been a pursuing, they're trying to pursue that.
I'm sure it was a pursuing.
So that, so that's a chance this road could stay in this terrible condition? For, for a per- period of who knows how long?
Well.
Until we get some money, yes.
Well, we don't know. Well.
Well, I've lived here thirty years.
Well, we're gonna go in order, though, okay? So this is how these meetings are gonna go here. So in the back there?
So say, for example, we do find the money for this project, and say they do want to pave this road. Um, there's, there's four things that I see why the road is deteriorated to this point, is that its drainage system is inferior. The water just simply sits under the road. You put a brand-new coat down, it grows at four inches, but a lot of the areas need to be risen a good foot. Uh, the road simply sits lower than the side, than land on each side, so the water simply sits.
So we're gonna, instead of doing all four, cause we don't have good memories, and so one at a time? So Kevin, you're gonna answer that one?
Yes, so the, uh, that is something that we have identified as being a existing issue, is the flatness of the road, you know, there's no cross-sectional pitch to it, but also there's no way for the water to go. So you see a lot of these ditch lines that fill with water. Our goal would be to design a system that can get it away from the roadway.
Excellent. But also, say we do pave it, what speed control mechanisms can we introduce so that we don't have ourselves another mass pike lane, fast lane here? Uh, I've had, it's pretty seismic when you know an eighteen-wheel is coming down, you know he's doing sixty-five miles an hour. He has no regard for any of that. If we put a brand-new flat surface down, um, I like to benchmark with things that work. One of the things I've seen, I've actually gone to IKEA recently, go down there to their parking lot. It's a little bit of a, a drive, but they have low-speed speed humps, and you simply physically can't go faster than twenty-five miles per hour over the hump. And the plow truck can actually go over it. And the plow truck can actually go over it and not damage its blade. And that could prevent, uh what could happen is everyone's fear here is if we put a nice flat, smooth surface on here, we're gonna have another racetrack. And that's what we, um my idea is to benchmark with a system that works. So that we don't have to worry about our engine mounts and transmission mounts on our cars and our suspension. Uh my alignment is rubbish again. But um if we put, if we put one point five million dollars into a road, is it gonna be junk in two years because of the drainage, the level of the road? And people going the speed of light down this road, so.
Certainly, I, and I can, I can address those if, if you wanna start, Mr. Chair.
I'll just jump in to start, so all of these conversations, which is a good thing, were the first things that were talked about on Main Street as well. What can we do, what, 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 the, the new term that came out of it was traffic calming, right? So whatever, that's what we use now, traffic calming, cause like what's gonna, what's gonna do that? So just, just to sort of prep off that, I completely understand the question and knew that this was gonna be one of the first questions. And we, we as a town center committee had discussed that a lot for the town center as well. And I know exactly the, the humps you're talking about, the town of Westfield has a couple that go right through the front and they pave, I mean they plow through them all the time. And it's sort of, we didn't do those on Main Street because of how direct and how often it's used, but there might be other options on less used roads, go ahead Kevin.
Yeah, so um you, you kicked it off to me nicely, so the, there is a process, um and, and I'm curious too, that have many people witnessed heavier trucks on High Street?
Yes.
Okay, that's important to understand too, and there are options and even though it's a local roadway. Uh the Mass D O T controls truck restrictions on a regional level.
Right.
So there is an opportunity where you could potentially investigate a truck exclusion for through trucks. Cause obviously as homeowners or agricultural users, you still need access for trucks that are visiting that particular property. But uh you could investigate a truck exclusion on High Street for through trucks. That would keep them on sixty eight and there would be, in my mind, no reason why they shouldn't be on that state numbered route. Um as opposed to cutting the corner and coming down High Street. So there are opportunities to control trucks, uh but there are certainly opportunities to control speeding traffic. And I, I said that somewhat tongue in cheek about the natural calming, traffic calming with the roadway surface. Because anytime you repave and you create that new surface, you create, invite the potential for speed. Uh but we have significant experience with our firm um in doing traffic calming devices such as speed humps, which are typically fourteen feet long. And, and just as you both indicated, they do a great job at keeping traffic at the twenty five miles, twenty to twenty five miles per hour as you go over them. We can investigate that with the emergency personnel, but they can be strategically located. Uh but they also have to be frequently located enough where it creates that theme as you go along the roadway. And not just one or two, because if you have one or two, folks may slow down for that feature. And then hit it hard right after, so if, if it creates a theme, uh that is an opportunity. It's something that can certainly be addressed, that doesn't have a major bearing on cost because it's just a little extra pavement. But there are other things and, you know, this is a beautiful country road. Um but there is something to be said for how much room motorists feel that they have the room to use. And uh there's research that's out there that shows that even striping the road. Um you can make traffic feel as if they're pinched a little bit more than normal versus having no striping at all. Um where they are operating two to three miles per hour or less just by having striping on the road.
Did we um, I feel like we might have talked about bumping the sidewalk a little bit towards in places, almost, it's just a psychological thing. Where instead of the sidewalk coming a straight line, it sort of bumps out a little bit to, to just create a little bit more of a, a thinner corridor that may do some of that psychologically as well.
You, you can, I think with um, with the twenty two foot width, um typically you wouldn't go less than twenty feet as a standard.
Yep.
So it may be visual, um the other thing is plantings on the side of the road that may not interfere with the plowing operations. But certain things that have the, the visual cues that don't make it look as wide of a swath to operate within. So there are tools in the toolbox, you, you're bringing up an excellent point. Uh but there are certain things that we can design in, like in the next stage of things to look at. And even identifying now with like a candidate traffic calming feature. So it stays on a concept and kind of is memorialized that way. But potential for truck exclusions for through trucks, not the local trucks that are visiting the properties, but also other traffic calming devices.
Is this uh sidewalk that's gonna go the length of High Street, is that gonna eat into property on that side? Where some people have property right up to the street, you know, so how does that work?
Correct, now typically, um and I've felt that way before with my own property, that um there's a natural feeling that, you know, cause you're maintaining it, you're mowing it. Um you're landscaping it.
You own it, you own it.
Yeah, that you own it right up to the edge of road, um but the town owns a certain swath called the right of way, which.
Oh.
And, and the road may not be in the center of the road necessarily, there are a couple of areas where it might be skewed more towards one edge versus the other. But that is something that, you know, as it migrates to the next stage, um we could get real survey, on the ground survey to locate all the bounds, all the. Property corners and pins, the stone walls, um to do the research to show where that right of way is. But there's an opportunity where you can construct in some of these photos too. Um where you can see the physical evidence in the field on the left image. Where that, most likely that rock wall is the edge of the right of way. And you've got some room to fit a sidewalk in there.
I see, okay, yeah.
So there may be cases where the town would have to get a sliver of land that's outside what's already publicly owned. Uh but there also may be a need for, as we look at the drainage and get the drainage off the road. To have a series of pipes and catch basins and manholes, to have that outlet, um say at a property line somewhere that can allow the water to get away from the road, so that.
How many feet back from the street does the town own?
That is um.
You keyed it on that when you said that, so you might as well.
Yeah, this, it, it can vary, so um it could be anywhere from a few feet to ten feet.
Okay, I guess.
Depending on the, where the road sits within the right of way.
I see.
So what we've doing, just again, we're right in the midst of it on the town center, this right of way process. So typically the way the process goes is after it's sort of surveyed and then confirmed where the actual road is and where the right of way. Um when it gets to a point, if it got to a point where it's, it's getting close to construction, we then have to ask. So for the example, the town center, the T E C is helping us now, we have fifty one properties that we're, we're putting together packages with T E C. Where it, uh each specific one has this thing called a letter of intent, it's got a sketch of your property. And the square footage of impact that may come in for what this project has proposed. And at that point, you can either choose to donate it to the town because you're getting a new road. Or you're, you're right to have that um assessed at a certain value and then the town will compensate you for it. So it, or you throw up a hissy fit and, you know, there, there's a number of options the way it can go. So it's a long way from, from that happening, um and I, I don't wanna, wanna sound like forever, but it, they, there are a number of conversations and designs. And everyone will have so much input before it gets to that point, but we're there now for the town centerpiece. And it's a, it's a, it's a very specific, we had the, David and I, David, the town administrator over there, had, had the, there's, there's a woman dedicated to that right of way process with Mass D O T. Who sat in here and went over that whole process with us and we're now, we're in the midst of it and it's a, it's a very inclusive process with each property owner.
And, and the process at the state level with the TIP project, which Route sixty eight is, is extremely thorough. Um uh very calculated, very uh process oriented. Um if it was a town sponsored project that had other funds contributed, um the process is a little bit easier. But as far as the land area needs, some might be temporary nature where the contractor might have to do a little bit of work that just barely touches on the private property. But it never changes the lines. In other cases, there may be a permanent easement or a right of way adjustment where the road, and we've seen it in many cases where the road is, not in Hubbardston. But the road is already on private property, but nobody ever knew it. So it's an opportunity to correct prior offshootings of the road. But really, um and this is something at the next stage of design, is we would look at how to design the project so that we don't have to take property if we don't need to.
This road is so old, this was the old sixty eight years ago, I mean, this was all designed long, long ago.
Yeah. Yeah, and it's, it's.
I go back to the sixties and it looks the same now as it did in the sixties, just like you, huh?
Yeah.
Okay, that's our little info. We remember.
I got a boundary marker on my property right, right out on High Street, is that legit or?
That's something the process.
It's marked on, it's marked on a deed, a boundary marker.
It, it could very well be.
It could be, that's where the property line is.
Yeah, so we would hire a professional land surveyor, um surveyor that's registered in the Commonwealth. That's licensed to do just that, all the property research, to make sure that, um you know, some things could, could change over time. But they review the deeds to make sure that everything mathematically lines up.
Yeah.
For the right of way, so it could be that's legit, um.
Yeah, could be, yeah, yeah, okay.
Uh but that's something that.
Yeah, that should, I'm just cur- curious.
Yeah.
Any additional questions, yeah, over there, Al?
Yeah, the town, the town made an improvement, uh just for some new people who are here, the town made an improvement to High Street sometime in the late eighties. They improved maybe like a third of it, I think from Mister Watkins' house going south.
Okay.
And uh as soon as that was done, because people wanted to save time to get to the Rieda. They would fly down High Street, cause nothing was built into the road to slow them down. So they would do anywhere from fifty to seventy miles an hour to go down High Street to save that minute and a half or thirty five seconds. Instead of going all the way around the playground in order to get to Rieda even faster. So until the road got deteriorated to the point where it is now, where it almost forces you to slow down. That's, that's first few years was, it was quite, quite busy on Sunday morning, people using guns to shoot at.
Okay, yeah, another question?
I would just add, you know, I, this is an exciting project, being someone who lives on High Street. Um and I would just add that the, it's a coveted place to walk. Very coveted because there's no shoulder, I guess maybe there might soon be, I haven't seen the plans, or is there gonna be a sidewalk through the town center? That's nice because it, it's really hasn't been safe to walk, especially up past the bank and to the park.
Yep.
It, it's like, it's dangerous, so.
Sorry, I was just basically gonna say, yes, that's all gonna be connected now, all the way to the end of.
Oh, that's really wonderful, I'm glad to hear that.
And this is, this is, this is sort of, our idea was that this would be the natural extension of that.
Which is wonderful because so many people and bikers use it for walking.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, I don't know if you survey that, but I mean, the reality is people love to walk our street and as do I and all of us, so.
Yeah, okay, Al, you wanna jump in again?
Yes, please, uh are streetlights included in the design or?
No.
I was asked too about street signs.
Well, then, I mean, that seems to be one of the linchpins or one of the important things that has to be included, I would imagine, in the final design. You have no streetlights.
Depends on who you ask.
All right, so, so streetlights was a big deal on Main Street, let me just go into a little bit of this.
What about solar for streetlights?
Maybe, so all those actions coming later, so let me just start off with this, so the, the current program that's paying for the, 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 the Main Street project. Which is the Mass D O T tip, they won't pay for any lighting. So, so the reason it didn't quite make it, besides the fact that people didn't want streetlights coming into their houses, because that's a big deal as well. Because sort of careful what you wish for when it comes to that, um is that Mass, the, the town was gonna have to come up with a lot of money. Like a half a million dollars for Main Street to be able to light it, and this was a little bit more ornamental than what you're talking about. So I'm, just wanted to sort of start with the fact that those discussions have happened already for Main Street and, and will happen for, for High Street as well. But they haven't come to the original design, A, because I think this is really high level now.
Yes.
But you can go further on that, Kevin, if you want.
Yeah, I mean, lighting remains an option, lighting remains a great way to improve safety along roadways. Um uh it is somewhat of a lightning rod, you know, with um some folks despising lighting, you know, for. Um you know, the dark sky environment, for others, it would enhance the pedestrian environment off hours. So it remains an option for the project. Um we certainly haven't uh omitted it for any particular reason, other than trying to keep a manageable cost. But it certainly remains an option, and even if it's an option at certain key locations where it's at the curve or at the ends. To light up the intersections where there is potentially conflicting traffic. Um but it, it does remain an option as the project moves forward.
Okay, any additional questions, yeah, Al?
I just, there's one comment, so I think Ryan put in a grant with M R P C to do traffic counts on High Street.
I don't know.
I think with this grant, I mean, you should look.
Yes, and I think I have a contact name for M R P C, um I will reach out because I know that was part of the dialogue for.
Brad Harris maybe?
Yeah, some along sixty eight and then potentially adding one for sixty eight. But you know, if they hadn't done one, uh we could potentially do one as part of what we're doing right now.
Well, I just thought might save you some time and money.
Thank you.
Yeah, go ahead.
Is signage also included?
It would be, yep.
And I, would it be like a twenty five, twenty mile an hour type of?
Kevin, you're gonna answer that one too.
Another lightning rod. So um the interesting thing, it's gonna be one of those things to be careful what you ask for. Because with what I heard about some of the speed observations with the public. Uh the very unique thing about how speed zones are determined is that it's typically based on the eighty fifth percentile of the traffic that's moving along the road already. Which means that the faster traffic is moving, the faster or the higher your speed limit should technically be. So it's a little counterintuitive, um uh unless there are warning signs, you know, like the yellow and black signs. That could say curb ahead with an advisory speed at a lower threshold. But there is a very deliberate process to go through to document the speeds. Um and uh do you recall if there was a posted, or maybe you all know, actually posted speed limit signs on either end today? So that's something that we can investigate, cause every road is actually catalog- cataloged.
I'd like to be able to check on the GPS, cause that's where all the street signs, like the, that's what it's on now. They don't, they don't really do the speed limits anymore, cause it's on your GPS.
Cause you guys yanked them all out, throwing all the.
So.
Put uh right to farm signs.
Si- signs has to be part of any uh roadway improvement project. And if we talk about traffic calming devices, those typically have warning signs in advance so that nobody gets abruptly jarred without knowing that it's coming up ahead. Uh or stop signs, um other things that would typically be part of a, a rural road like this. So signs would be part of it as far as the speed zoning, that would be a specific process and study to go through and or petitioning the state. But I think that the better thing to focus on would be how to manage speeds through design. And then at some later point, look at more specific speed zoning, zoning. Once those traffic calming features are in place.
Based on population density or that sort of stuff as well?
Yes, so uh that's something that we've done for several communities. Um and after advising those communities, sometimes we find that the speed, instead of being thirty miles per hour, technically per state regulation should be thirty five.
Okay.
Um but there are other things, tools in the toolbox that we will keep in mind as we move forward that might help manage that speed process.
Yeah.
Okay, Al?
I apologize for taking too much time, but then if you increase the speed of the road, then you lose the utility of the road. As was noted here by this young lady, people walk it, people walk it with their dogs, people take their children up and down the road. While it's probably horrible for cars and it definitely is a challenge for cars. Kids on a bicycle, it's almost safer because the cars aren't zipping up and down the street because they need to save a minute. And the kids are learning how to ride their bicycles and you can go with a carriage up and down the road and you know you're not gonna be interfered with by traffic that's going thirty five posted. But actually doing maybe forty five in reality.
Yeah, I, I think that just points to the need to try to introduce things that will manage the speed after the road's constructed. Sort of changes the context of it, changes the uh, changes the environment for those that come onto High Street.
Hat in the back, do you?
Current population density, the closeness of the houses, the speed mechanisms, the, the speed hump, one every football field.
Oh, you mean as far as how, how frequent you'd see those?
It would set the speed at twenty five miles per hour as it should be.
Yeah, the, the spacing itself um is also dependent upon where drain structures are. Because you could introduce one that you wanna make sure still drains adequately.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Uh but for a roadway that's four thousand feet long, you would likely have half a dozen of them along that stretch to try to manage those speeds.
It's better than a speed sign, a yellow, done.
Okay, um so we're gonna probably take a few more questions, I don't actually see, I, I, uh any online here. I, I put my own question in to have people raise their hands or put questions, do you see any, Kevin?
How does this finally get approved?
Just a. No, it's okay, I'm just. No, it's okay, I'm just, wanna check this first and then I'll go to you.
Yeah, just your dialogue asking.
Okay, sounds good, that so that did work, okay. Okay, so we're gonna take maybe just a couple more, but we do have the rest of the meeting for us to get to, and this is very preliminary, and there'll be more for us to go through, but. More of an introduction to everybody, but we do, we do have some other business, but but go ahead.
How does this finally get approved so that it's done?
Sounds good, that was gonna be how I led into the next piece of this, so so Kevin, could you go into, so we've expended the money that the select board is currently allocated for this. Work that they've done in the presentation that we're seeing tonight, so um you, how would you see the next, it wouldn't be all of it. Uh, but how would you see the next piece of this going from from your standpoint?
What I would recommend is that, um, and by the way, I did, under the Q and A, there are a few questions there, I don't know if you want me to read them off. Kevin, are you able to see the Q and As tab, or is that just for me?
I can't.
I think, I think a lot of them have already been posed, but um Eric Kellyan posted seven nineteen. Not really sure how the question, the question process goes, but I have a question, we've been told that High Street would be paved or repaired this year, what happened to that? Uh Danielle, Eric Kellyan, um so this is, I think, the consistent question, which was, we would be looking to pursue other funding sources.
Right.
Uh, did a resident of Hubbardson propose this?
A select board, you know, I I would say uh, the best way to put that is, is it was uh, as the town center committee was finishing up the work on the town center design. Um, the the, we wanted to continue with the keep moving forward uh piece of the. The reconstruction of the the town community and town center as itself, so this was something that the select board discussed after that and and authorized the money for this next step.
Yeah, and uh she was referring to um the posting on the website, talking about the road maintenance plan as being a desire to upgrade High Street.
Okay.
And there was commentary that would prefer not to have streetlights.
Okay, there it goes right there.
Um, so, yeah, as far as moving forward, I think public dialogue is critically important, I think that um.
Yeah, yeah.
Tonight's showing is wonderful, so thank you for all of you that came out this evening, which shows, you know. Concern about where you're at now and then a desire to maybe do something different, um to upgrade the facility. The next part in the process would be to try to uh pursue additional grant programs, but meanwhile, maybe start along the design process. Um, the first thing I would recommend is that um a survey be conducted of the whole corridor to understand exactly how wide the right of way is. Where the roadway sits within the right of way, uh and then we could take, you know, something like this alternative, maybe some traffic calming devices and drainage considerations. And do what we call preliminary plan, that's actually on a survey document, to be able to know. You know, a better cost estimate, a better estimate of where each permanent or temporary easements would be, uh and the like. And that's only gonna help the process for trying to grab additional funds from other agencies.
Okay, so so can you, if you haven't already, I can't remember, I don't think you have, can you put together a proposal for us?
Absolutely.
For what what you just described there in in detail, like you guys always do, with with what would be included for the select board to be able to consider, you know, in the future?
We we would be happy to, we hadn't done it yet, uh we wanted to wait for this evening, uh but we're happy to put a proposal together to outline those deliberate steps moving forward.
Yeah, okay. And and what we did last time for the town center is we went to things called, they have sort of key uh key benchmarks, twenty-five percent design, fifty percent design, seventy-five percent. Some of those have to do with literally how much of it designed, some have to do with just triggers and Mass DOT for certain reviews. So don't take it like, oh my gosh, they only designed a quarter of the road, it's more like ninety percent of the road's designed, but they just call it that because it has to go through certain. Steps and review with Mass DOT depending upon the funding, so those are sorts of things that you probably will see next, posted. Um, as they submit a proposal for some additional monies and we'll have plenty of time to sort of talk about it as a group.
Thank you, everybody, thank you more.
Alright, okay, thank you, appreciate it.
Fuckin' you guys.
I know, it's all, it's all people like me, yeah, it's all like people like me.
How's mom doing?
Does it show that you post them all around?
Yeah, definitely.
Thank you.
We're playing.
So we'll give you, thanks guys for coming tonight, we'll.
I'm gonna stop my recording, I think you may have to restart.
Yeah, why don't, we're gonna give you a few minutes to sort of figure it out before we get into our next items, to make sure we're recording again, but you guys, um, I assume you're not staying for the rest of our meeting, please.
I don't really want.
Please don't subject yourselves to that.
Super awesome stuff.
And then we'll get back to the meeting in a second.
They can, as long as they don't invoice.
Rattle them some so far, so they, they can try away.
Yeah, exactly. I cut that, cut me a little bit. So I'm gonna disconnect from this at this point.
Okay.
I'm surprised like they weren't chiming in more from Zoom. Yeah, well, how many people were in the Zoom?
I didn't see that one.
I think there were six or seven maybe.
Really, that's it? Hmm. Then again, they could all have been huddled in the whole house in one rather than by, you know what I mean, but.
Go on to, you know how to do it, so.
We have some copies we can leave with the board.
Oh, yeah, please.
For um four sheets of existing conditions and then one of the concept that was in its entirety rather than chopped up from the PowerPoint.
Yep. Yeah. Thank you.
And then um I'll leave a hard copy of the PowerPoint.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks for coming in.
My heart pleasure.
Alright guys, well, we're gonna carry on as you uh get your way out of here, um. So next item would be uh item five, uh updates on some community events, uh what do you got?
Alright, so first off, I do wanna talk about the bottle and can drive that did happen August fourteenth. Um, troop one-one-eight-zero-nine for Girl Scouts says, thank you to everyone that swang by and uh threw out some bottles and cans to them. They uh filled most of that truck, so I don't know what the total is yet, but they had a good day and they say thank you to everyone that came by and and donated to them. And then we had the big one, the the dingy dash, which was Saturday, and if you missed it, well, it's just too bad for you, cause it was a very good day. Um, the Lions um ended up selling out of all their food on the food truck, which was great for them, and they were um selling some ducks and stuff like that. So they did well, we had fourteen boats show up and enter and do their race, three of them sank, um two of them right off the get-go. Um, two of the young men made it halfway out there before they sank, we had one that ended in a V, he was still afloat though. But he was literally, his points and the tip were at the, like in the air and he was.
Like his body and.
Yes, yes, it was those like like this, he was like a big U, it's like a banana, um. But yeah, we had boats in there for well over ten minutes in the water and made it, uh we had dinosaurs, we had um mermaid boats. We had the Dukes of Hazzard, we had the DeLorean, we had all kinds of boats, they were very interesting. Um, it lasted about two hours, it was super fun. Um, I posted a lot of pictures, but I didn't get through any of the videos messing around with that yet, cause I've been busy this weekend. So that will come, but it was definitely, everyone that I talked to had a blast and had a good time, so you were there, Chris, right?
I was there, it was a great day, weather was perfect.
Yes. I know, it wasn't too long.
The event was fantastic, the crowd was happy, energized.
Can't have a better event for a town, you know, yeah, it was a, it was a win for everybody.
It was great, it was great.
So what do we do, do we borrow Rutland Fire's boat?
Yes, so here's the deal, I checked with Fire long before, they knew, they always know the date, cause I talked to them always a couple months in advance.
Yeah.
Um, and they did, I checked with them like a couple days in advance, they had the boat serviced. It was good to go, they took it out the night before just to make sure, and not so much. So the engine went kaput halfway across the pond, apparently, I think they were in comment. So they borrowed Rutland's to make sure that we had a boat, because we don't need anybody having any issues, especially when we have so many small children. You know, and granted, they all have to wear life vests, but that's not the point, things can always go awry, so we need the fire department in there to make sure. So, yeah, so we did borrow um Rutland's um Fire and, but those were our townies in there, that was Jeremy and uh, yeah, Taylor. Um, and they enjoyed it too, they li- they enjoyed listening to my husband complain on the backside, apparently the whole time about how I put that buoy out so far, it was all my fault. And yes, they they got a kick out of that, and yeah.
Alright.
So, yeah, so that's the dingy dash, and those those two, like I said, the bottle and can dingy dash happen. Next year, enter your boat and make sure you come, cause I, you don't know what you're missing if you've never been there. Coming up, we do have on September eleventh, the five K for the twenty-fourth annual library race. Um, if you haven't um entered, you still can, correct?
Yeah, you can always, you can always, you can show up there, um and.
You can always add, enter. Like day of, and they'll take you.
Day of, absolutely, it's a couple bucks more, but the, you know, they'll, they'll almost always, they they buy a certain amount of shirts and there are always some extras, so the 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 big benefit of. Doing it early is that you guarantee yourself a long sleeve t-shirt, but I've never seen actually anybody who showed up there and didn't get one anyway, so you can still show up.
Okay, good, alright, good, so yeah, definitely five Ks coming up, that's September eleventh, nine AM. Um, September eighteenth, we have uh Field Day from nine to three with a rain date of the nineteenth, that's um put on by the Lions and I just help out. There's gonna be all kinds of good stuff, I've talked to Joyce, the chicken barbecue will be there, so everyone can go get your chicken barbecue. Um, there'll be cow flop contests, there'll be a kids obstacle course, there's gonna be all kinds of vendors, they have a different band this year, um the Greens aren't staying, cause they were busy, so they have. Uh, somebody else coming, but the roof has just been redone and the the playground will be there, so it'll be excellent, it'll be, we'll all be back up to par and having a good time. So again, that's September eighteenth, nine to three, and then the Lions are selling ducks, apparently they're having a duck race. So they're selling little duckies, and they will be selling them at Field Day, the race is gonna be the twenty-fifth, I believe, at the.
Rod and Gun Club.
Rod and Gun, at what time, do you know?
I don't know the time.
I'm not sure the time either, that's the only part I did not get, but they're selling ducks, so you can buy a duck. And they're gonna put it in the water, and it's gonna race down the little waterway, and the fastest one wins. So, there's gonna be more information coming from the Lions, I'm trying to get a flyer from them, so that way, cause that's the only thing I didn't get a hold of is was the flyer, but they're selling ducks, so they're gonna have a duck race on September twenty-fifth.
Can you use that rubber duck?
Yes, rubber duck, yes, not real duck, we're not buying, we're not.
Excellent question.
Yes, we're not, we're not doing that, no real ducks were, have been armed, uh just rubber ducks.
Just checking.
And then also in October, the Lions are having their haunted hayride, they're looking for skits. Um, it's going to be the twenty-third and the twenty-fourth at um Rieda Ranch like normal, with the rain dates of the twenty-ninth and thirtieth. And you can go to haunted hub, hauntedhubbardson.com if you need more info, I will be posting more um flyers about that. But they're actually, they're, they are looking for skits and you can win some nice money if you do a very good skit, I highly recommend it, it's super fun to do. So, and if you don't wanna do a skit, then definitely go, cause it's a very fun night. And that's all I got.
Alright, well, thanks again, um this, this sounds great. Uh, okay, anyone else need to uh contribute anything to community events? Alright, we will move on to uh room number six, which is new business. So we've got the VHB Phase Two Environmental Report on Town-Owned Land. Um, and we've got a couple members of the planning board here, uh I don't know how you wanna uh begin this, but um why don't you um. Sort of, if you don't mind, Alice, let let us know what a a Phase Two Environmental Report is and and you um, you know, how it came to be um, you know, in front of you.
Okay, sort of beginning at the beginning, we did, we, the planning board is the affordable housing committee in town, we were appointed. We did a survey of all the town and land, all the town uh land that might be suitable for this. We, town owns a lot, you know, cemeteries and schools and wetlands and so forth, but this is the only lot left, and it's a old, the town old gravel pit, lot fifty-seven, map three, Pritchville Road. So um, we, this has some long history, but anyway, um VHB, the consulting firm, was gonna put together a feasibility study to use it for affordable housing. And um, and then the question came up that we should have an environmental study because it had been used by the town. Specifically for firing range for twenty years and a dump for street sweeping for, I don't know, ten or something years. So they did, phase one was the paper study, where they went back and looked at all the history of what the land's been used for, and phase two, which is this. They actually did soil sampling, and so I gave the three, I know this was, I'm sorry, I was, we had a lot of trouble sharing this long report. This is the report and I'll leave it, it's two hundred and some pages, but operatively, you've got summary paragraph, and you got a map that shows where the gravel range. Or the street sweepings are and the shooting range, and so we knew when we did this, that if it turned up certain samples, they were reportable. I mean, you had to report it to Mass DEP and rectify it, so what they did find is, if you look at the map, um they have all these borings. Two of them in the rifle range area came up with lead contamination.
Yep.
So that's gotta be remediated, and then with the street sweeping, uh Mass DEP has a policy on reuse or disposal of street sweeping. So that has to be done too, but it's not a reportable event.
Yeah, so this is, if I can kinda jump in real quick, cause this is my world, so environmental remediation, cleanups and stuff.
Sure. Oh, I didn't know that, okay.
So, that's why I wanted to sort of take a look at it, and I did today, so I went through it, you know, in detail. Um, just just to sort of summarize, so um, you know, it's always as, just as it always goes, be careful, you know, what you wish for when you look at, start looking into things.
Yeah.
Um, and um, you start testing things, and and I actually thought it was gonna be worse than what came out of this, so.
We we did ask, cause I said to Ryan, if you want us to walk away, but if we find something.
Oh, no. Yeah, yeah, understood. So so still, so what what were done were twenty-four samples essentially, so twenty-four soil samples, you know, there were some, what things are, that are called composite samples where they're brought together, but overall, twenty-four samples. Two of them had levels, uh the Mass DEP has this thing called RCS one, which is reportable concentration in soil. And they, they're based on parts per million, you guys have probably heard about that at some point, it's basically very, very low percentages on on, you know, within the soil. So uh for lead, um the parts per million, which again is not a hazardous condition by any means, is two hundred parts per million. So twenty-two or so of these were below that, and you 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 can test it, you, the soil in your backyard probably has similar or even more. So, but there were two, one was that three hundred something and one that was five hundred something, that triggered this becoming a reportable condition. And once it's a reportable condition, there's no going back, and you have a certain amount of days, I think it's a hundred and twenty, to notify the DEP that you have this reportable condition. And then you sort of have to to start the process of um uh what you're gonna do to remedy that, also that has timeframes on it. This is um many, 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 many shooting ranges everywhere has this, have the same condition, which is why I thought it was gonna be worse than this. The good part about our shooting range is it began in the two thousands, it purportedly, we began in the two thousands. Older ones had lots and lots of lead shot, but lead shot hasn't been as as prevalent, so there wa- there's just not as much, so these are, these are. Smallish type areas, so if you if you're gonna take a bunch of samples from from a certain area, you break it into little cells and you take a sample from each one of those cells. We have a couple of them that have high levels, that when we get to a point where we have to deal with it, we'll probably have to go into those two areas, go get the soil that's in those. Get rid of it offsite and then put back the material back in, so it's not cheap, it's not exorbitantly expensive because it's not everywhere, but it's something we'll have to deal with. And then as far as the street sweepings, as as Alice just said, Mass DEP, you know, all communities you can imagine have to deal with street sweepings, and like, what do you do with them? So people do a lot of what we do, which is just put it somewhere where no one can see them, right, did it for years and years and years. But there are requirements for it, um that they're supposed to actually go to landfills, you're exempt from testing them, cause typically, if you tested street sweeping, sand and all that. It would be high in petroleum, right, for example, because that's all stuff that's dripped from people's cars on the roadways, but you don't actually have to test it, you just have to bring it to a landfill. So that's the sort of thing, that if we were gonna go there, if we are gonna go there to our, to the sand pit and clean up whatever the footprint is of that. We wouldn't necessarily have to test it and analyze it and all that, but we'd have to remove it, bring it to a licensed facility, and get it to a point where it's no longer there. So those are sort of the two things that we're gonna have to be dealing with um in the process now, based on this this Phase Two study, is that?
Yeah, there was a reuse option too for the street sweeping, which I think is Davis only, cause I think it is somebody that said Travis might have an idea that could be reused. Instead of exposing of it.
So the reuse that I'm used to.
Yeah.
Is still using it as a landfill, at a landfill, but you're not actually putting it in, which is gonna go underneath the landfill cap eventually.
Yeah.
But you're using it as, cause when people bring trash into a landfill, you have to on a daily basis cover it with something so it doesn't stink. So it can be reused as what they call daily cover material, so it's much, much, much cheaper to get rid of, because the landfill needs it anyway to deal with their own trash. So it's something you can use there, so it, again, it's it's, and it's typically clean enough to be able to do that, so so a lot of times, communities bring them to landfills or give them, depending upon what. Or give them, depending upon what the capacity of the landfill that they're gonna bring it to, to be able to cover their trash so it doesn't stink and they have to be in compliance with. Massachusetts D E P solid waste, so anyway, um, so, so, yeah.
So two other issues.
Yep.
So let me, let me, Liz, can I just stop you right there for a second, so to be clear. Because we started this process and revealed these two situations, regardless of what happens with this property now, we have to remedy those two problems.
Correct, and the lead one, I would say definitely, and that's something that, cause it, again, it's reportable to the D E P. And once we report it by law to them, we have a certain amount of time, we've gotta deal with it, the other one is not reportable and if we just sort of want them to have them sit there and. Street sweeping piles, not much would come of it, so I'm just saying that sort of blankly, I know I'm probably not supposed to, but still. But one of them is a literally like legally reportable condition.
Right, okay.
So, yeah.
So, the other question is, from, from our point of view is the affordable housing committee. We've spent CPC funds that were appropriated way back in two thousand sixteen to try to find land, right? We've had two, two approaches that are going after some tax title land, which isn't going anywhere fast, and we've got this site. So, if we're gonna continue to proceed with this site, I guess there's the question of, does the town have anywhere else for the street sweeping? Is the rifle range, is there another option for that, because you wouldn't put housing where the rifle range is and. And the other thing is that this rifle range is actually not on the town property, a bunch of it, it's on, goes into the Marinelli property behind us. And I just wanted to tell the board also is a big picture, there's this huge gravel pit behind, at the town pit, several. And one is owned by the Marinelli sisters, it's in a trust now, they approached us. And the other one is Norman Brown's pit and it also has a, you know, a different name in the registry of deeds as landowners, but I've talked to all those individuals. And their big hope was solar fields, there's already a solar field that abuts this property. But that is like years and years and years away, so now they're looking at doing some sort of housing in it on, so it would be. You know, I I was worried that if they tried to, you, in theory, you can open up these pits again, you could go, jump through all the hoops and get a license. And then you wouldn't wanna put a senior center, a senior residence and have, you know, the eighteen wheeler, huge trucks going back and forth all the time. But that isn't gonna happen, that land is ultimately gonna have a housing use too. So I guess the question is, I don't think we should spend the CPC money to clean up the mess personally, cause I don't. I don't think it's fair, they were housing funds. So I'm hoping the town can come up with funds to do that, that's not out of the CPC money. But the other problem it leaves us with is, the next phase of this, which is a feasibility study which got derailed. Now we've spent a substantial amount of money on the environmental studies and we don't have enough to finish the original RFP. So, I've asked just myself, I haven't worked too much with the planning board on it yet and we meet Thursday. But I asked them whether that RFP could be scaled down. And like eliminate the three parcels across the street that were gonna be surveyed and studied. And instead of generating like five or six different options for this piece of land, if we went to them and said, look, our need is for. Our, the biggest need for affordable housing is senior units in town, I believe, the, the only ones we have are, um, Hubbardson House. And there's, last I checked with Claudia, who's out of town now, it was a seven year waiting list. So, and they were built in the eighties and where the, the older people are, which is me now, here, the most rapidly growing demographic in town, right? So you really do need senior units, so that would be my preference, obviously.
I just don't understand how you, and I don't, not not trying to talk negatively about this, but I don't understand how you would develop that. Until the stuff behind it has been dealt with and realistically has a real, and I'm not even talking about. Just remedying the sand pits, cause I know the Browns is here and the Marinellis is up here and they all have to kinda meet and, yeah. I just mean like even af- cause that has to get done first in order to build or do any kind of realistic. At least in my mindset from looking at an aerial view, I don't know how you would put anything on the town stuff that's way in front. When there's gonna be all this monstrosity going on behind it while they either, will they fix it and then figure out what they're actually doing with it? And then, somebody has to build, so if you put buildings up here, construction is insane. And that amount of land, if they were to put a road that accessed to sixty eight and all that, you know what I mean, like the possibilities are endless, I don't know how.
Well, they have, the, first of all, these two groups are working together.
Yes.
And Brown is much of the excess gravel.
Yeah.
One excavated too low and the other is too high.
So it needs to kinda go down here, so levels.
Cause they came to us.
Yes.
And they said, we'd like to react, we'd like to sell off the gravel to make money for the houses. And they said, how many, and I, and they said, but we, we proposed this to the planning board years ago and it was rejected.
Yes.
So I read that and it was like seventeen large, huge trucks a day going out.
Stuff going in and out, well, were they building, were they building the big houses then or were they trying to put in a, a cul-de-sac kind of stuff?
Running the gravel pit that.
Oh, just the gravel, yeah.
This was their, this was their how to renovate the gravel pit situation. And there's always been, well, we need to sell the gravel in order to renovate this land. So we have told them that it's a neighborhood now, it was a neighborhood that shut it down in the beginning. And it cannot be, the planning board will never, our planning board, you know, we can get voted off and whatever. But would never approve another gravel pit operation out of there. So you're gonna have to use what you've got there to level it out and figure it out. Um, and also fifty s- fifty seven has a right of way to access to the Marinelli pit and the Brown pit, which is heated. Would have to be rebuilt as part of this.
That's what I mean, this.
But they're also looking to, to exit on sixty eight on the other side.
Yeah.
So I mean, I think, I think, I mean, I, I don't.
Then you gotta get over the Hubbardson Brook. And also that's owned by somebody else.
Crossing already.
Yeah, but that's also owned by somebody else, so now you're getting very, very.
Is that the Bates, is that the Bates property?
I don't know, I, I don't know all, all of names of the owners.
Right, yeah, that, that one has Harper Farm on the gate and they're using it as storage.
But, but here's the problem I have with this. If we have not built any affordable housing in town since nineteen eighty, a habitat house, it's going in.
Coming, it's down the street, they go.
So we now have forty years of having done for housing, any kind of housing. We, when this is the piece of land that's left, we did an inventory all through the town, every other piece of land that town owns, this is it. It's not a small piece of land, you, you are gonna have to put a road and there may be some inconvenience, but. But I mean, that's it, you say, okay, we're not gonna build it for another twenty years until the Marinellis and.
That's what I, that's what I mean, like how, how do you figure out how, like, because you have to, they're gonna have to go in. Even if they got access from sixty eight, you're still not gonna be solely from sixty eight, cause it's gotta have a roundabout and.
I think it is gonna be.
And everything else, they're gonna end up, some will come this way and it's just.
They've also been talking about it for decades, so it's like.
I know, when, when will it actually end? No, I know, I just.
It will be, it will not be trucking out large trucks of gravel, but there will be construction vehicles putting in houses back there.
Just, just, just the concrete alone. I can't imagine how many trucks of concrete are gonna be driving in and out to do foundations and everything else, like. When they're pouring, and granted, it'd be, you know, a one day, they're go, oh, we're pouring this foundation, so it'd be in and out, in and out, and then.
And what's the concern of the long haul traffic?
The, my question is, is how do you put a residential right up front when there's gonna be, how many acres does Marinelli and Brown own back there? How many hundreds of acres?
I think theirs was a hundred and sixty and then the Browns is another forty, or there's a, there's a two hundred and some acres.
Yeah, so I mean, in an ideal world, the solar system would be good, the solar field would be good neighbors, right? And that may happen. Yeah.
But, at the moment, the grid is so back, so far behind. That they're thinking, they wouldn't, the Marinellis wanted to work with us. And then they got an offer from a, but it was under contract, a, an option with solar fields for both of them. So I mean, it's, it's not an ideal world, it is a big, fairly good sized tract of land. I mean, you could move, you could locate the residents significant distance from the road.
Yeah, cause I'm like, who wants to live in senior house, it's like, it's the same living next to the railroad tracks, I mean.
I think you're over, I know, I, I do think you're over dramatizing.
No, okay, I could just, I wouldn't wanna live next to construction for years.
Yeah, but hey, is it ever gonna happen and then.
True.
And the road in on the other side, so if you move the road all the way over as close as you could get it to the Pitcherville line, cause it's not set. We could relocate it as long as you didn't, we had the access. That whole line runs against the solar field, so there's no noise from across the street, it would just be the use of that road. To build residences, so you may be able to put the buffers in, I don't know, it's.
Well, there's a mound house in between the solar field and the pit. There is a house in there.
Oh yeah, there is one.
The mound house, people, I ca- I can't remember her name, I'm better. A mound house, it's one of those underground houses, they tore the house down in front and then they built a mound house in back.
Sand people live there?
Huh?
Sand people live there?
No, it's a very nice couple, they're very nice, um, but yeah, it's, it's across the street, the pond that has the, the lobster buoy in it. You know what I'm talking about, yeah, and there's like a garage there, they ha- they tore the house down in front and they built, I call it a mound house, I don't know what the hell it's called. And it's in the ground, you know, it's one of those houses, it's, yeah, they're very nice couple, um, but yeah, they live back. Yeah.
Yeah, and then behind that is this big solar field.
Yeah, yes, yes, yeah, that's where the solar field, yeah, behind it.
Alright, so we, we need, go ahead.
Uh, I was just gonna say, so what I'm hearing from Alice is asks for tonight, cause it sounds like, you know, there's more things you could go into detail. But I don't think we have the information materials, but it sounds like the first one is dealing with Dan, as you mentioned, um, figuring out. What funding source and approximately how much we'd have to come up with for remediating the lead, cause that's a huge piece. Maybe something to put on for the special town meeting if we thought we could pull it from free cash. The second piece is seeing if it's worthwhile having a conversation with police about. Is there anything else they could do for their firing range and DPW for their suite, their sweepings?
Firing range. I'm in the center of Gardner, okay, don't look at me like I'm wacko when I say this, but underground, underneath one of their buildings. In the, the center of town, their main, I don't remember if it's their town hall or their building department. But in the bottom is a firing range that a lot of police use in the area. Nobody knows about it, except for like crazy people like me that hear about these things, like, no, no, seriously, there is. Yeah, I know.
Alright, the other continue?
And then the third piece was just the, um, Alice's direct question of, you know, modifying the scope of the feasibility study piece. And if we thought we should give thoughts or suggestions on that, I think.
Okay, so, to get, just take those in order, right, so the first one, to, so. So we'll have to, um, so the phase two is done, so there are phase three and phase four, that have to, to, have they discussed those with you at all, the engineering firm? Okay, so their phase three, phase four is the actual, um, remedy design, they call it, so that's actually when you've selected. Phase three has to do with, uh, bless you, has to do with feasibility studies and different options, you know, do you dig everything up? Uh, do you target areas, do you, um, treat, uh, cause lead is tricky, lead, lead can, depending upon its, you know. Uh, level and toxicity, it can go to one place versus another place, but you can do certain treatments in place to make it cheaper, so. Anyway, there's a number of feasibility study things that they could consider for that sort of thing, that would be part of the phase three, which is another cost. And then the phase four is once it's selected by them, approved by D E P, we're on board as the owner, generator, that sort of thing, we then sort of go from there. So I think we, we need to get some pricing from them, I think that's the next step, Alice, um, i- is to, to ask them for, um, for pricing on, on. The, the next phase of the work and I'm happy to be copied on all that stuff if you want.
So no, to your might, to your way of thinking, there wouldn't be any point in pursuing a feasibility until you got over the remediation. Well.
Not necessarily, but I think we need this regardless, so I mean, starting that process, um, whether it's in parallel or not, fine, you know, so I don't, I don't think they, they're exclusive.
Okay, and I'll have him send those cost estimates to, I, I really don't think it should be paid for, it's with CPC funds, I just don't.
No, I, I, I hear you, um, and maybe there are options too, I mean, there are, you guys have heard of brownfields grants and things like that, so that, you know, we're a, we're a small town, we're. We're gonna cry as poor as we possibly can to, to, to see what we can have for options, so, um, but be, you know, it'd be nice to know, um.
It'd be nice if there was some grant money.
They would, and they're gonna be able to do some, you know, simple math, right, it's five thousand square foot lot, they took twenty two samples. These two apply to X amount of cubic yards, which is converted to tons and costs this much to dispose of, so they're gonna help us out with some sort of an estimate there and we can sort of go from there.
Okay.
Okay. Is it even an option to use CPC funds for that type of project?
Just, so here's a story with the CPC funds, they were appropriated with a very nebulous file. Uh, description back in two thousand sixteen.
Okay.
Um, and it's, and it, but it, what part of it was to acquire land for affordable housing, cause that's always been the main reason. There is no affordable housing, cause there's no land for it, right? So anyway, um.
So if you have to clean up land to afford that?
Yeah, I mean, it's gets more and more tenuous and away from affordable hous- you know, from actually bricks and mortar, the further you go, so. I mean, I guess you can make an argument, well, you can't build a housing there until you clean it up.
Right.
That's twenty two. Yeah, but now you don't have any money.
We don't have any money to build the housing anyway, cause we've used the rest of it, we've got twenty, twenty four thousand left, twenty two five, I think, left of it. And we have, y- you know, Ryan had us working on these, well, let's do tax title foreclosures, right? So we said, alright, so we gave him, so we're chasing these tax foreclosures, but the chances of any of them coming through.
What about that one that's a big hole in it, right over here in the center, the one that the whole chimney fell in?
Oh, that was on Ryan's list, that, I dare you to go over there and stand on that, there is no way in the world you get a septic system on that piece of property.
Well, it had a septic system before.
It is a cliff that drops, yeah, one tile, before tile.
Yeah, but as long, whatever was there, you replace what's there.
What was there was eighteen hundred.
Alright, so.
I mean, we just, we, we did study it, we studied every piece of, every lot that he considered as possible housing lot. But it just drops precipitously down the back.
Okay, so that was, that would be the first one, the second one you had there?
Firing range?
Yeah.
Alternatives to the firing range.
Alternatives, okay, I mean, I'll, we just have to ask them, so stop shooting up there, go to the landfill, right, I mean, we have a landfill here, can they, can something? No, I, I, I don't mean to be callous about it, I don't mean, you know, to be dismissive to the people who have guns, but.
Already contaminated scorched earth.
But it's mostly on the neighboring property, I mean, you're gonna have to deal with it.
Well, no, I mean, the landfill in town.
Like if there's another option for them to relocate, there's just a firing range.
We used to have a few landfills.
Down by the DPW.
Yeah, well, there's a, yeah, a few places.
Right, so, anyway, but no, it's a question that someone needs to pose too.
Well, well, I'll get our phase three, um, but if you wanna take it up with the chief.
Sounds good, I'll do that.
Okay.
Uh, and so the third one was to.
Uh, Alice's RFP for feasibility study for the housing itself.
Yeah, so.
And changing the scope.
Yeah, I think that's a no brainer, right, for what you talked about, for, I mean, I think you just, the way you frame it, which you, I'm sure you would know this, is look. We need you to select the ones that are most likely to succeed.
Yeah.
Right, and then scale it down to that and proceed. And I, I think, you know, it's gonna be a little, um. I, I don't, I don't know how much money it's gonna cost to clean this up and finish the study and all that sort of stuff, but I don't think you should stop your process, I don't know what you guys think, but. You've got, you've had the process going on for, for a while now.
Three years.
Three years, for what you're doing, feels to me like, you know, whether it's going in parallel, I, I, I just think it should continue on.
Now, then you just throw away all that money, so that'd be kinda dumb, in my opinion, I don't like, even whether you agree or disagree, you're already gone down that rabbit hole, finished the rabbit hole. My opinion, to at least see where we're at.
Well, it's about a third of the money we have that was spent on these two environmental studies, so the question is, do you spend the other two thirds? Or if you guys really think it's not a good idea.
Well, I, if I would've got you, if you would've asked me from the get go, I would've said, that's not a good idea yet, wait, but. You guys are not me and you are the planning board and this is your rabbit hole to dig, so, therefore, keep digging, in my opinion.
Yeah, no, but we've been, you know, we've been in, in the loop throughout the entire process and, and that's why, cause we're part of, party to it, you know, so I just think moving. You know, just jamming on the brakes, cause we have a hiccup, um, you know, I don't think that's necessary.
I think it was a, I mean, VHB thought it was a pretty clean study considering what might've been there.
I know, that's why, that's the, the first, my first reaction was when I started reading it was, well, it's just two, like it's that.
No, I wanna leave this, this is a full printout of the report. Most of it is all negative.
Back out carrying that thing around.
Yeah, negative, uh, results from tests, most of it.
Alright, so we, we, uh, everybody satisfied with where we're at currently and we've got some action item, action plan, okay, good.
Good.
So our next item, uh, thanks Alice, um, would be, um, room number six B, which is a change order for the Hubbardson Center School Roof Project. Which is repair of a chimney located near. which is repair of a chimney located near the music room and the request for thirty thousand two hundred and fifty dollars. So, a easy request loosely here, I think, David, right? Because it's within project contingency money?
No. Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, so I think this is more of a notification. So, so there's a, you wanna go into this a little bit, David, or you want me to? I'm happy to, but, okay.
I agree.
So I will. So the project, you know, was allocated with a certain amount of money, some, some we paid, some the, the school building authority paid, and then there's a contingency in there for change orders that, uh, that come up through the course of the work, and it was three hundred thousand dollars worth of contingency, or some, some big number. Um, th- this came up recently, um, that the, uh, the chimney, uh, when they went and assessed it was gonna fall over. And so it was necessary for us either to do it as part of this contract or on our own later. And so, um, uh, we discussed it, we had meetings about it, and David was present during a number of those as well. David saw it, we saw, picked photos and all that stuff of it. And they, there's a mason that, that, uh, is working on the project along with the roofer, and, um, you know, the, the school, who, who is, uh, the mechanism for how this, this project is being, um, uh, procured, uh, was also fully on board with it, so the, the consensus was, um, approve it and move forward with that work, which is, is gonna happen, and this is a notification of that.
And the money's already there, correct? So it's, they're just letting us know.
Yes. Yep.
We don't have to take any action on this, right?
Correct.
Yeah, okay.
Yep. Good enough?
Good enough.
Good enough.
So wa- was this cost repair the chimney comp to any other? Was it, did out, or did we review?
No, part, it's a change order to the project. So there, there's.
So is this a fair price for repairing the chimney?
Yeah, so I reviewed that as, as well as the owner's project manager who works, um, for us essentially, the architect who works for us essentially. Um, everybody reviewed it and it was a, um, it was not a, a lump sum that was submitted by, uh, Cape Way Roofing. It was a per hour, based on total amount of hours expected for this work, with the materials all broken down, and was very fair. So, um, you know, yeah, it was vetted.
So why does that leave us in the slush fund?
I'd have to ask. It's hundreds of thousands still.
You have, uh, you're gonna add to the slush fund tonight, uh, but right now you have three hundred seventy-eight thousand dollars.
Yeah. Yeah. Okay. So we're good. Okay. Um, okay, we'll, we'll get to that, what, what Dave's talking about a little bit, but, uh, so next item, if, if no one has any questions on that, is the, the building inspection services intermunicipal agreement discussion.
So I'm gonna be meeting with the mayor of, uh, Gardner on Wednesday next, uh, the first, and I'll be raising a number of concerns that we've articulated with respect to the performance of, uh, of some of these contracts that we have with, uh, Gardner, animal control, uh, and, uh, building inspection services. Um, I'm also going to explore with the town of Barry, uh, an intermunicipal agreement for veteran services, and they've s- expressed the willingness to have that conversation. Uh, that's scheduled for September eighth. Um, so I think, I think that's where we, uh, stand at this point.
Okay. Alright, thanks, let us know.
Alright.
Um, the next item is, uh, fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three budget preparation calendar. Um, so this was part of our packet here. I don't know if it, is this the packet that's in front of us too, or is this just, uh?
Just, no, not.
Should be on the Google.
Yeah, just on, um,
Google Drive.
On the drive.
Yep.
Um, as far as, uh, you know, this is the standard draft schedule for each year. Um, I don't know if there's a, David, anything you wanna bring up to us that you, is out of the norm that you want us to know about? Or, or if you just wanted to notify us, cause that's something that is part of the, uh, calendar itself?
Yeah, so I, I'm obviously padding this, this off of, uh, what Ryan, uh, put together for you last year. So I've just concluded all the dates and the, the steps that need to happen, you know, in the town law. It, it seemed like that that worked very well for the town of Hubbardston.
Yep.
And the last go around.
Yep, no, that definitely is the, the one we've been using every year, so.
So I can get this out to the departments if you, uh, if you approve this.
Okay.
Do you need a motion, David?
Sure.
I'd make a motion to approve the FY twenty-two-three budgets, uh, planning calendar.
I'll second that.
Is there any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous? Um, sounds good, moving on. Uh, we have, uh, this was put on by, by me. Um, the next item is discussion of flashing speed limit sign on Main Street. This was brought up to me by some, some Main Street residents who, if you recall, a few years ago, we put one out there that was a solar sign that, that would put up what your, your speed is, um, and, um, it just, uh, started not working a while ago and, and didn't go much further. But, um, people on Main Street, I think, as we're all seeing traffic across the country get, uh, busier again, um, back to, you know, pre-pandemic levels, uh, that, that, it doesn't exclude Hubbardston, and so people have been, been, um, more on the road and going faster. And so there's been some requests, um, for, uh, whether or not we can, uh, the select board would consider, uh, putting up an additional or a new, um, flashing speed limit sign. And some of the ideas that were brought up, or you guys have probably driven through communities where you've seen, you know, if it gets to a certain, it says slow down, or thank you, or, or whatever else. But, um, uh, I, I told them I would put it on the agenda to, to discuss, but, um, you know, I don't know if anyone has it, anything to add, but I mean, I think it's a good idea. I don't, we'd have to get costs on it and all that sort of stuff, and I would, if it's a, if it's something the board wants to pursue, I would talk to Travis about getting some options and chief and that sort of thing.
Does it comply with the new sign by law?
That's funny.
The talent is exact.
I don't know.
The talent is exact?
Oh, okay, that's exact. Um, okay, but still, I mean, anyone have?
So yes.
No, no, I'd, I'd be in favor of, because I, uh, s- a few meetings back, I brought up the whole point of the intersection that had been troubling me. So anything I can do to try to improve it, make it safer is good for me.
So it was previously stationed like in fr- right in front of here, I think. Um, do you guys remember the flashing sign, or is that literally?
Hmm.
Still there, it's right on front, right, right on front.
The one that says twenty miles an hour.
Right, but the, yeah, no, the.
Yeah.
No, the flashing.
The flashing one.
Yeah.
Yeah, it blinks school zone and the school zone one?
No, it just flashes your speed.
Flashes your speed.
Oh.
Yeah.
It hasn't worked for like two years.
That's what I mean. It doesn't work. So that's the point. So the point of all this is, is to, to get one that actually works and, um.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, it's o- right over there in front of the library, isn't it?
Right.
Yeah, okay, yeah.
Coming up the, coming up the hill in Westminster, that's the type of thing you want.
Yes.
Yeah.
Right. So anyway, um, uh, we're gonna look into some, some, um, alright, well, let's take it.
You looking for a stationary one or a mobile one? Cause they have two different ones.
No, 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 just the stationary.
There's a stationery from that.
Do we have enough time to get a cost, to get police chief and, uh, DPW on board prior to the closing of the articles for all town meeting?
Maybe. So I'll reach out to them and, and see what their thoughts are and see if they have any comments and, um, get some, some pricing here and, and, you know, that'll be the goal.
Didn't, slow down. Didn't chief want a sign that said no left turn on this, on this agenda?
Yes. Um, I approved it.
Okay, so if that's all set, it, we didn't have to approve it?
Yeah. No.
Okay, cause chief kept saying, oh, you, I need a sign. And I'm like, great, put it on agenda. Okay, alright.
Where is the new lefts, no left turn?
Uh, coming out of this parking lot dur- only during sc- when school, when they're dropping the kids off.
During the hours and such, it's, yeah.
Yeah, school, yeah. So, because it's gonna be near imp- yeah, it's gonna go like right in the entrance
That's a good idea. Yeah.
of this parking lot, cause it's, it's gonna be a zoo.
Yep. Yep.
Especially with the, the school, the roof and, ugh.
Mm-hmm.
Just trying to get into this parking lot today was a zoo, with teachers parking and everything.
Yeah.
Yeah. So anyway, sorry, squirrel.
Okay, no, no problem. We'll, we'll, we'll bring it, uh, everyone will have a chance to take a look at that again, but just wanted to get, take the temperature on it. Sounds like we can at least take the next step.
Okay.
Uh, next item is, is item F, which is the class two application. So we, we also had that in our packet. David, can you give us a little on that?
Yeah, so the, um, business is being sold. There's no alteration to the structure or the use of the premises. So this is a, uh, pretty straightforward transfer of a class two used automobile dealership. Uh, we did, uh, just do a, uh, Cory background check on both the gentlemen. They, Cory came back fine, no issues there. Uh, there are s- four conditions that I would like you to, uh, uh, impose when you s- when you approve this. Uh, one is that the property taxes, uh, uh, get paid, and it's a very small amount of about, uh, twelve dollars. It's outstanding, but still. Uh, they're required by state law to have a twenty-five thousand dollar, uh, bond, which they haven't done yet. Um, and they n- any order of conditions for the building inspector and fire chief, who have to sign off on the application.
Okay, sounds good. Um, anyone have any questions, or you wanna get into whether or not we, uh, someone wanna make a motion on this?
I guess I have a question for us. David, does it make sense, have you talked to the building commissioner or fire chief to see if they have any reservations now?
No, I have not.
Does it make sense to hold this until they can look at it and see if they have any concerns?
You can do that.
Like, cause otherwise it's not a, I mean, I know we know the taxes are twelve bucks, which is minimal, and the bond is traditionally something you get afterwards, cause there's a cost to it.
Mm-hmm.
So I understand those, but I'm just concerned about if the building commissioner or fire chief have any reservations.
Yeah, they understand that with these conditions, they're gonna be waiting two weeks anyways, so we can put this onto another agenda.
Okay, yeah, sounds good. No, no, no need to rush it. If we've got some questions, so we will wait. So you'll let them know that?
Yeah.
Thank you. Okay, um, the next item is the, the re-presicting, re-presincting of the twenty-twenty census. Um, I think that the, um, basically just doesn't apply to us?
Yeah, you're just gonna have one precinct. We do have some paperwork that we need to have for the select board's.
We'd sign it, yeah.
And what's happening here?
Okay, based upon results.
We're one precinct town.
Yeah, you're, you're not changing your precincts.
We don't have enough people to have.
Just cause the census came, it didn't.
Yeah.
So this is a formality that we're.
They tell all the sand people.
Yeah, all the mound houses.
What, do you wanna come?
I do, but I didn't know if Dan wanted to read anything out loud on the things and.
Do you wanna read anything out loud on the thing?
Thank you.
Do you need a motion for this, David?
Right.
The thing on the thing.
Yes, please.
I'd like to make a motion that we continue to be a single precinct after the twenty-twenty three precincting.
I'll s- I'll second the motion.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Yes.
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, unanimous? Okay, as we, as we sign, we'll move on. The discussion of tree removal at forty Heelville Road, this was something that, um, that recently came in. Um, you know, David, you, you, it was sent along while you were gone, I think, or maybe when you came back?
Uh, it was, uh, put on when I was gone, but I did, uh, do a, uh, drive-by this, uh, this afternoon, and, uh, it's not a subtle, uh, removal of, uh, trees. Um, it seems like the property owner has, uh, removed a lot of trees, uh, on private property, but there's also s- some town trees that were also removed.
Okay.
Uh, Katie, I think you were also looking at this.
Yeah, I, I drove, I did a drive-by and it's cleared. And it, the problem is it's on a scenic road. Now, they did do a, um, uh, they went, they got permission from Jeff Bork to remove thirteen of the trees at the planning board meeting. I don't, I'm, I watched the meeting. I'm kinda confused on why it was approved, because the scenic road bylaw, whether you agree with it or not, the, the point of it, yeah, yeah, sorry. The point of it is to keep a canopy. You can remove after a certain part, I know, cause I live on a scenic bylaw, uh, by road, uh, scenic road. The, you can remove yourself, whatever, further back, but up by the road, you have to keep anything that's like six inches or over. And it's a certain amount of feet that you can't cut back, and you have to get approval through, uh, Jeff Bork and the planning board. And they wanted, from what I gathered, the homeowners wanted to remove them, cause they were worried about the trees falling on the house. But for a setback, it's seventy-five feet, so there's no way a tree's gonna hit the house. So I'm confused on why it was approved, but that's, we're past that point on those thirteen specific trees. But I drove by, it is clear.
Which is forty, I mean, I, I live right.
No, it's four D, it's lot four D.
Oh.
It's not four D, it's lot four D. It's across the street from number forty-one, and I mean.
Where, how far down is that from the newest master?
You're, you're past, you're, okay, so if you're coming from, uh, your end.
Yeah.
It's right, it's a little ways past the, the waterfall. And it's on, yeah, it's on your right.
You can't miss the lot now.
You can't miss it. It's empty, there's no trees.
So you've got the, past the waterfall, there's a little house over there, they got some goats in the back.
Go, yeah, go a little bit further, yeah.
You keep going with the goat, I, I know where it's.
And it's like, it's empty. It's like, it's empty. Oh, I went down there because of this, cause I was curiosity, cause again, nosy, and I just wanted to see for myself.
I've been up there a few weeks.
It just seemed to happen over there too.
And then, yeah, and then I went back and I lis- you know, read Jeff Bork and I read, I asked Mallory for the compl- you know, the original, why they wanted them cut and all this, and I watched the planning board minutes, and it's like, it was thirteen, and there's no way that was the same. But now we're at the point where you can't put those back, so I don't know what the hell you do.
Alright, so we're, that's done, right? So what, what, where, where, um, where can we go from here? David, what would you, what would you recommend?
I think, uh, I need to have a conversation with the tree board and find out what, uh, what happened.
Alright. Okay. Alright, thanks, and please let us know. Uh, okay, some old business here. We've got the Veterans Agent resignation effective August thirty-first. Um, so we've got a potential to join the city of Gardner, Barry. Uh, how, how far along are we with those discussions?
I have reached out to the town administrator of Barry and, uh, they are interested in sharing the service, and I'll be meeting with them on the night, uh, eighth.
Okay, great. Um, then we've got the town of Rutland Communications Tower update. Uh, we've, proposals received for power construction and the ne- next steps, uh, discussion. So what do we have in front of us?
Alright, so we did actually find out that there was a, um, uh, bid process and an award. Uh, let me find.
Page four to five, no, page five.
Okay, so the, um, uh, proposals were received on August twentieth, and, uh, the town administrator and district, uh, representative, uh, selected Elevated Consulting Incorporated of Homeward New York for the contractor for the amount of four hundred twenty-five thousand one hundred fifty dollars. So that money is, uh, paid for through a grant. So we're off and running.
Alright.
We have a start date?
We don't have a start date.
What do I, what do you expect?
I try.
For all these years, what do you expect?
One follow-up question, David. At the last meeting, I know the question was posed as to if we ever move forward with getting a cell phone provider to connect to that, who would receive the proceeds. I know we thought it would go to the district, but whether that would be equally divided amongst the communities or go straight to us? Have we been able to?
Yeah, so I had a conversation with Mr. Moriarty, and he said that, um, um, the, the understanding is that the proceeds would go to, uh, the district, and they would use those proceeds to reduce the assessment for all the member towns. I asked if, uh, the other member towns had, uh, cell phone revenue coming into the district, and he said none of the other towns had a tower that was capable of doing that. So no, this would be, uh, something that they would, uh, expect us to pay in order to reduce the assessment for everybody.
But then we'd have cell phone coverage.
Then you'd have cell phone coverage.
Okay. Alright, so.
And what are the, and what's the district comprised of? What was in the district?
There are five towns, Ubrantree, Ashburnham, Rutland, uh,
Ocam?
Ocam.
Barry.
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 Harding.
Is Ashburnham part of it? I thought they have the roof resatch.
No, they're not. Ashburnham's not part of it.
Yeah.
Was it Warren? No.
Warren, they just added.
Yeah, Warren, like, uh, Warren was on that, yeah.
That was their add-on.
Hardwick?
Is it Hardwick? Yeah, Hardwick.
But Warren was the last to add. That was like last year.
Yeah.
It was supposed to reduce the assessment.
It was.
Yeah, I know, and it didn't. It like went up, and like, what the hell is this?
Right, yeah. Alright, so, uh, I guess, uh, I mean, how do we find out additional information about it as it moves along? Do we just have to, do they send things out, or do they only, do we only find out when we ask?
Uh, I'm, I'm in c- regular conversation with these people, which is to say I leave a lot of phone messages for them.
Yeah, right.
I know, man, it's okay.
Okay, um, alright, well, I would love to stay in touch with that, because we need to figure out when the right time is for us to know when to ask, when it's our turn to put something up there.
Yep.
Alright.
Yeah, cause we're gonna have to go out to bid for the cell phone service.
Yeah, right.
And, uh, we need the, we need time to ramp up those, uh, documents and go through the formal.
Yeah, and, and we'll know as soon as they give us the, the project schedule. So that's the absolute first thing we need to do.
Let's get the power bill first, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, every time I walk into David's office, I'm like, so what's going on with the cell town?
Yeah.
I kid you not, and he's like, oh, yeah.
Alright, so next is the Hubbardson Center School Roof Project. Uh, we alluded to this before, but the MSBA requires certification that the bid savings will be added to the project contingency budget. David, put that in English, please.
Okay, so you went out to bid for the, um, construction. You had a, uh, Okay, so you went out to bid for the um construction. You had a uh estimate for what the construction was going to cost and that uh uh the actual bid resulted in a savings of a hundred and fifty eight thousand eight eighty six. So um we can apply that to the contingency uh and boost your contingency to cover any imaginable uh issue that may happen with that roof. And I don't think we're gonna need much in the way of t- contingency on that because they're they're moving along very quickly. Um it requires a formal vote and the form of the vote is there. Uh it will make it appear as if we're going to have something on the order of two or three hundred thousand dollars left at the end of the project. And that's a common misunderstanding of how this is gonna work. We're gonna only borrow what we need to borrow for the project. We're not gonna overborrow. So we will adjust the borrowing for the actual cost of construction and all the other things associated with the project. And then any excess borrowing capacity will not be converted into cash. It will be adjusted downward at the next annual town meeting uh so that you can in effect give the money back to the taxpayers.
Okay.
In the form of a reduced assessment.
So I have this, which is I believe what um if someone's gonna make a motion, this is what it would be worded at?
Yeah. Uh that's the precise wording.
Okay, someone wanna, someone do that? Okay, sounds good. So I'd be starting with I certify to make a motion first.
I will. Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that um that I I certify that the town of Hubbardson is legally authorized to borrow up to one million three hundred and twenty thousand five hundred and nineteen dollars debt to pay for the Hubbardson Center School roof project and to spend up to two million nine hundred and sixty nine thousand seven hundred and forty six dollars to complete the project. The town of Hubbardson is not required by law to return project bid savings to the town of Hubbardson as general revenues or required by any law or agreement to pay project bid savings to any lender if and when any such bid savings are accrued.
I'll second that.
Okay, is there any discussion, questions? Nope, seeing none? All in favor?
Aye.
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, unanimous? Uh okay, thank you. Uh next will be the um the Economic Development Committee membership clarification. Um.
Seven members, all with a volume like sixteen, yeah.
Yeah, this has been, this has been in flux for quite a while. Um uh what do you want us to do here, David?
Yeah.
Uh well, the the question arose uh whether the ex officio members of the uh Economic Development Committee were um had a vote and whether their presence counted towards quorum. And it's, I did a a bunch of research, thanks to Lori Reed for her help with that. That indicates that the int- original intent of the select board when it, the the committee was created was to have a seven-member Economic Development Committee uh with uh with full rights for uh voting and uh quorum. Uh and that was further clarified by a select board vote. Um and it's clear to me that the original intention is to have a seven-member uh full voting right uh committee. So the ex officio could uh, it would be a torturous log- set of logistical propositions to to argue that the ex officio f- member, ex officio members did not in fact have voting rights or quorum um counting.
Okay.
How many people are on the committee today?
Seven.
Seven.
And they're all straight up legit members or are two of them mixed?
Well, he's the ex officio for planning, I'm the ex officio for select board. And then there's Whitney Freiberg, which is the chair. And then there's four others. So that would make seven. But the question was, it's been, we've been like all messed up for a while, whether there was seven full members and then the two ex officios were extras and didn't get voted. And then we were like, no, they're part of it, you do vote, and we're just trying to clarify it, cause it's very messy if we don't get some clarification on which way to go, whether him and I can vote or can't vote, and whether there's supposed to be seven excluding us or seven including us.
So to memorialize this, do you want us to take a vote on that, you think?
Yeah, I think there's a lot of confusion about it. But mm, to me, the record is clear. Seven members, each, all of them with a vote.
Alright. Yeah, makes sense. Okay.
So it's a that simple a motion, that?
Yes.
I'm happy to make a motion.
Please.
I'd like to make a motion to reestablish the Economic Development Committee with seven full members to include a full member each of the select board and the planning board.
With voting.
Well, full members would be inclusive.
Oh, okay, alright.
I'll second the motion.
Any discussion, questions? Nope, seeing none? We'll uh take a vote, all in favor? Yes?
Yes.
Aye.
Yes.
Okay, um unanimous? Uh next item, um Montezucet Regional Planning Commission alternate member appointment.
I'm on the motion.
This is a whole river from the last time uh looking for a member of the select board or they're designated to be the alternate member to the Montezucet Regional Plan.
Oh, I thought we gave it to Jeff when he was not here.
Yeah, I think we did, but.
Shh.
Well, I think we talked about that last meeting and there were two appointments, weren't there? Wasn't one.
Oh.
Damn it.
Cause they have the two different. Montezu- has the two different authorities. One's the planning commission and one was the other one. Jeff, do you remember the name of the one you're on?
No, I think it's something Alliance, actually. That's like, I I can, it's on Abbott Street, I can tell you the building.
Jeff, did you know you were on one?
He did, cause we talked about it. He missed the meeting, he got appointed to it.
Yes.
Yeah. So happens when you don't show up.
So I think this is just an alternate, right? This is leaves.
Yeah, I know, I know, I know.
Alright, well, is anyone willing to be an alternate to this?
What do you do? What are your responsibilities?
When the planning board member person can't go, you go. They usually have a monthly or bi-monthly meeting. They're extremely excited.
Go where? Where do I gotta go?
Uh I think they're over on the Lemonster-Fichberg line.
Abbott Street off of Route two.
Do I get reimbursed for mileage?
Nope.
I don't know, do we budget for that? Probably not. But you can put it down on your taxes as a volunteer gig, keep track of mileage and.
Okay.
Yeah, you can. You can. I thought you couldn't, can't you? I thought you could count, but. Really? I never do, cause I can't keep track of it, but.
Oh, okay, good. Good job backing out, good job backing out of that.
Fine, do that way.
Yeah.
Alright, so Chris is gonna do it?
No.
Oh.
Uh I suppose I could be the alternate if I had to be.
Okay, um anyone wanna make a motion?
I'll make a motion that Heather, uh I just went blank on your last name, Heather.
Monroe.
Monroe be be appointed as the alternate member to the Montezucet Regional Planning Commission.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? Not debatable. Um all in favor?
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
I guess.
Uh thank you very much.
Nice to chat.
I I think you'll, you, I think it's gonna take very little effort, so thank you for volunteering. Okay, well, we're on to, we're almost done. Our town administrator report um is next. I'm sure we've we've uh touched on a lot of these things here, David, so why don't you uh take us through as you see fit?
Okay, so um uh Mallory had a conversation with me earlier this morning about our COVID nineteen Delta variant cases. They are rising in Hubbardson. Uh the staff feels that uh we should in- ask the public when they visit town hall or other uh town buildings to wear a mask. So uh I would like us to effective tomorrow require masks by anybody visiting town hall from the outside in order to preserve the health and safety of the workers.
Does that include people like me that show up all the time that don't get paid but pretty much are here?
I I think you're, I think you're in the in crowd.
Yes.
Okay, I'm in the in crowd, I guess.
Two f- two follow-ups on that, David. Are we gonna include an age limit in that saying five plus? And do we wanna specify that it doesn't matter if you're vaccinated or not?
Right, so a- as we all know, the uh Delta virus appears to be able to uh infect people who have i- received two vaccines. And the the age limit uh makes sense.
Okay, well, this, I mean, s- seems to be the consensus in the office? Right?
Yep.
Yeah, um do you, do you need action for us or is there something?
No, I th- I think the way you left it with Ryan is that he was in charge of the uh the safety of the of people. I'm happy to do it.
Yeah.
Should we post that on the town site as well as on the door out here?
Yeah, but. Yeah, where do they run it?
Do you wanna go into effect as of tomorrow, right?
Yes, so.
Yes, just to get the word out?
Yeah.
Okay.
Alright, well, I don't think, goes without saying, but not everyone's gonna be thrilled.
Alright, uh we have.
So does that, does that carry over like for us in terms of when, at our next meeting? Are we all gonna be wearing masks?
No, you're in the end, too.
What, oh.
Unless he tells us he's in charge, I guess, of this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just a follow-up on that. So David, you said the numbers are rising. Do you happen to have any of the local, the recent numbers on that?
Nineteen, nineteen cases.
From zero the other week?
From from thir- zero the other week.
In Hubbardson?
In Hubbardson.
Okay.
Oh, yeah, cause what happened is it wiped through the entire house. You know, rather than the other COVID strains don't necessarily transfer to the rest of the members of the household. The Delta gets everybody in the house there.
Can I ask one more question?
Of course.
On as far as the senior center goes, is the um director of senior services over there, the COA director, is she aware of the request of the change of the piece and has she had any concern about the seniors being able to attend any of the programs en masse?
Yeah, so the the they haven't been consulted at this point. Um and uh I think that that's a very wise step for those to take.
Okay, so you're gonna contact Claudia?
Uh, yep.
Okay.
Okay.
Alright, in other news, uh Vietnam Memorial is on uh is starting up. They've uh selected a company to carve the monument and they're um made a down payment and they are scheduling this for Memorial Day, Monday, twenty-two.
Great.
Bandstand roof project, that project is complete.
Great.
And it makes fagles.
Yes, it does.
It does. Good, good work, everybody. Police vehicle.
And that's gonna fade, that that roof will fade when the uh woodships start to fade in the playground, so it'll be.
Matching, matching. Very matching.
It'll be amazing.
Yes.
It can have the uh.
Nice.
Hand color.
Alright, the uh police vehicle camera project is uh going. Uh oh wow, where do I put that gear?
I assume Damon hasn't uh approved yet and does not have plans in the ground.
Then I, he said that he would have plans in the ground in uh September and none of them have received the uh final permit from the Kansas Control Commission.
Okay.
How about the school?
We're not holding that up though, right? Sorry.
We're not holding it.
Okay.
What about the school elevator? Is it fun- functioning?
Well, elevator has uh, we've received a bid uh from Worcester Elevator Company for forty eight thousand nine hundred dollars, which is within budget. Uh Senator Goby has uh very kindly carved out fifty thousand from the state budget for our purposes, so we can use that money for the project. I've sent out con- uh contracts for signature. I gave the uh verbal go-ahead uh to uh Worcester Elevator Company.
Sounds good.
Is that gonna be done, that's not gonna be, well, no, school starts what, Wednesday? So how long till that's, is there a?
So the the.
Finished date?
Sub- work of substantial completion is November thirtieth.
Okay. Does that gonna affect anything with caps or any s- students that are on wheelchairs or anything like that?
They can have to adjust, cause.
Um.
Oh, obviously, yeah, but I just mean.
I mean, the schools have to have them downstairs because they can't be expected to carry, carry them upstairs.
No, they could go around and come through a different door, perhaps to the second floor, but I just.
Yeah, this this should s- this should address the problems that people have with accessibility.
Yeah.
Playground equipment has arrived, as we heard. Uh somehow we talked about that. We're called housing VHS, we talked about that. The audit is underway. Um alright, I don't have revenues for F Y twenty-two yet, but I do have expenses for the first month and we're trending right on target, so we're in good shape.
Alright.
That's good.
Alright, thanks. Sounds good. Can we talk about the, can we talk, can we talk about the Curtis Recreational Field design? What is that?
This is a project that uh was in process when we. Sorry.
Curtis Rec, what could that means? I mean, maybe the new, like, I mean, there was some discussion about new s- new walkways and things like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, about walk from from the bandstand all the way up.
Uh it'd be freaking nice if they did, redid that walk track.
So, I don't remember the last time we heard about it, though. Sanders talked about it a few times.
Been a while, yeah.
Yeah, I think they were waiting for the other things to get done.
Yeah.
Okay.
I'll circle around and find out where we are with that.
Cause you can only do so many things.
Okay, that's.
This, it's a project that was um Ryan was working on.
Okay. Alright, any more questions on on the town administrator report? Alright, uh next item, policies review. We don't have any. Um matters not reasonably anticipated by the chair. I I don't have any. Does anyone else have any they wanna bring up?
Just one question. I don't, I no idea, I missed the meeting where we talked about um ARPA again with the finance committee.
Alright.
But I know we had, I think, talked about, or the group had talked about establishing subcommittee or committee for that piece. Have we made any progress on assigning, you know, even our own liaison to that or as well as receiving any requests from other folks that they're interested in being on it? Cause I know in part of the packet.
They talked about the government money that's gonna be given.
Yeah, cause in part of the packet, we had two documents coming for request of use of those funds.
No. Yep, yeah, yeah, no, all we've done is established the committee and how many are gonna be there, but I have you had any uh responses by uh people interested in being on the committee?
Uh.
Has it been put to the public?
We have.
Well, it has, it was put to the public. So there was a posting of it, yep.
It was.
Alright.
Yep.
I guess I'm just asking if perhaps it's something we should put on the, or ready to put on the next agenda so we can get them up and running.
Yeah, that's a good question.
I know you got one letter from um the diner, the diner.
They want the money, they don't wanna participate on their committee.
He's, he's a.
No, but, no, I, they didn't even know that this was possible, so I mean, that's why she sent the letter. I said, best thing to do is sit down and tell us your story and mail it to the select board, so that's why we got that one.
Yep, gotcha.
Alright, I I do remember getting a uh.
I don't think that's gonna. Public funds for private businesses.
I do remember getting a letter of interest, so let me circle back with Tony.
Okay.
Uh on the.
Well, let's, let's put it as a, one of the lead agenda items next time then, so that we can um.
Okay.
Is that great?
Yeah, I just looked at the cell that's coming through us, deep red.
One.
Passing through orange. Okay, anyone else have anything uh uh not originally anticipated? Okay, public press. Chris?
I'm getting, he's got nothing.
Move to your end.
Okay, second. Not debatable. It is nine o'clock. Um uh all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Yes, alright.
Yes.
Sounds good. So a lot done tonight.